Thus far, we have decided that we were not going to move[214.84-221.01][S01] to have this immediately anyways put to a subcommittee. And I guess I want to just make sure that now after seeing this, does anybody have any different feelings about the process? I guess as far as how we go about tackling this. So I just want to get everybody's thoughts and making sure that we're all on the same page on that. So anybody have any input on their feelings on extending this to a subcommittee?
Personally, I'm good with where we're at. I think there's some decisions and some direction to be made first before we consider that.
Okay, all right. All right, okay. So I just want to start off with just making sure that we're all still on the same path and making sure that hasn't changed anyone's minds.[275.84-281.74][S01] And so basically, if we're looking at tackling this here, at least initially with the board and our administration team,[290.44-296.38][S01] and basically how we are going to go through this process and such,[296.38-301.56][S01] and are we looking for input from anyone else at this point?[301.56-305.11][S01] Are we looking to get input from community?[306.24-309.84][S01] So I know we talked about doing a survey at one time.[309.84-316.01][S01] And again, I just want to make sure that we're all moving in the same direction.[316.01-321.84][S01] So just want to make sure that people's thoughts or minds hasn't changed.[321.84-326.94][S01] So does anybody feel that we need to look for outside input at this point with a survey of some sort? I mean, this here is available for the community for them to pursue and look through as well.[335.84-338.44][S01] So anybody have any thoughts on that?[347.51-350.34][S08] Nothing, nothing specific from me.
I mean, I still, again, I think if we can, if we narrow things down, because part of it is knowing, you know, what's already,
If we're gonna, I play devil's advocate. If you're gonna do that in fifth grade, you better plan and you're gonna have to do it.
Right, it's not, yeah, it's not something you're gonna wanna do, you know, in this room, but not that room, right.
It's a six for you.
Yeah.
Paint on the six for sure.
Todd just opens his windows.
Well, maybe, maybe a little competition for the kids, all right, you behave better today.
You get the air conditioner.
I just remember when we did that survey, at least when I filled out survey, and it was like ninety-eight degrees that day, so I know what it.
So, like I said.
And that's a good point, I mean, learning is better when the comfort is there.
Yeah.
And what's, what's already in the classrooms, are there fans set up in the classrooms?
We have fans available, they, we run the air, um, it, it tempers and if it's cold outside, it'll throttle back the cold air coming in. If it's hot outside, it'll open up the outside air so that you're getting more outside air in. Um, and then we do provide fans now, um, you know, the one thing that someday, I guess, that we, we could look at, um, the way the system was designed at Sugar Camp, the thermostat controls two rooms. And if Todd leaves his window open and he has the control, not this has happened recently, and that kick, then that cold air will turn off the heat in the third grade room and that teacher's complaining that it's hot. Not that that happened, no, but, um, that, I don't know why they laid that out that way, uh, but that's the way they laid out their controllers. Each room on that, on that side, is, two rooms are controlled off of one thermostat. And, you know, it might be something, and I can check into that, where we split that, each room get its own thermostat. They each have their own, um, heat exchanger up in the ductwork anyways. I don't know about, Dan might know more about the control ends than I do. If, if they could just tie in, uh, a different thermostat to that control room.
If, if we were able to, because there was, there was a question, is, are they, were they both fed off the same supply?
Yeah.
But they got, if they got reheaters, you know, the, the temper would take it the next couple of degrees. Um, if they're both individual for each room, then you would, they're, because they run off a zone valve, so you could possibly run it back into its own.
Yeah, now that I think of it, I think, um, there's one, there's one zone valve that controls two rooms, because it goes into the ductwork and up above it branches off to one from.
So that, that's why they're, that's why it's serving one.
Yeah. I mean, you, you, we could change some ductwork, you know, we, I could take a look at that too and see what that would run. But that would help customize each room.
Mm-hmm.
Which might help some of the discomfort in, in one room.
Is the discomfort really isolated to one room, or is there times where there are other rooms that come into play as well?
You know, I have found that the complaining is usually more about one room, you know, being too hot, too cold. How about you? I mean, there, you hear more than I sometimes.
Third grade room complaining I had my windows open? I think, like, the special ed wing is really warm, I don't know if that's deducting, they have that, I guess where guidance is, where special ed, that runs a little warm.
And, and that's due because.
I'm talking the whole fold side, but I don't know if that's even controllable.
See, that, the rooms he's talking about are over the top or next to the, uh, ductwork system.
Sure.
Underneath the floor, so I've actually gone in there when the, uh, probably Diana put it way back when, and, um, I took a, uh, temperature of the floor area, and the floor area's hot because of the radiant heat coming from the ductwork. And what we ended up doing was basically buying, uh, door socks, and we put them over the air vents going into those rooms.
Yeah.
But there's still a radiant heat from the floor area.
Because that's where the warm air.
Because that's where that warm air's being pushed to kindergarten and the art room and, and that way.
Other than that, like, in your cold days, it might, might have someone on the north side of the building who plays in school, because you're not, my room, I get all, so much sun, especially in the winter, that I find my room is comfortable, but I don't fluctuate much, so.
So, I guess in terms of a rough percentage of, of the days of.
It's not like one room is like ninety, and the other one's ninety by any means, so.
I'm sorry, Todd?
I said, it's not like one room is sitting at fifty-five and one room is at ninety, it's like sixty-eight and seventy-four.
Did I do mine for that?
Laser thing in there, and it's.
Because I, I do bring that up, I look at everything in, in the histories, and we, we usually run, um, sixty-eight to seventy-two. It is usually what all the rooms run.
Okay.
Which.
I don't think there's much difference.
My, my wife keeps it at sixty-three in her house, so sixty-eight feels pretty good.
So, I mean, in terms of rough percentage of days of discomfort, what, if you were to put that in a percentage, what do you think?
I, I probably hear two days a year, maybe, I, I don't hear much.
It's minimal, yeah. Less than five percent, is that?
And a lot of times too, Mike, I, I'll hear about it like two weeks later or a week later, and, you know, by then, you go look at the, the layout of the, uh, school on the computer, and it's like, well, everything's okay there, you know, at that point in time. Then you do the investigation, that's when you find someone had a window open or something like that on that case. Though I didn't, that time it wasn't Todd. Sorry, I regret that. That's my fallback.
Okay, then going on to the fire protection addition, um, the way I understand that is, that would be adding more, especially if there was expansion. Was there anything more specific shared with you, Jack?
No, it just, they mentioned the water system, basically, sprinklers.
Like putting in a sprinkler system.
And we did, at Sugar Camp, just put that new system in, you know, uh, which we've been testing and we're really happy with.
New system?
The fire, uh, detection system, so we have the new smoke alarms, the new, uh, heat alarms, uh, the better monitoring system.
Okay. And when did we put that in?
This year.
This year?
Mm-hmm. I wasn't part of last summer's project work. Okay, any other questions on the mechanical or anything else, Todd or Jack, that you wanted to share on that?
Jack, when, when they were looking at the sprinkler system, where they, did they talk about a system going in the ground to have water supply? Because your pump isn't gonna handle the demand?
They didn't talk about it, you know, I'm actually.
I think they're so used to being in the city water that they.
Yeah, um, and actually, in our discussions, I'm not sure of the need for a pressurized overhead water system.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
So we can't end the conversation on it.
Okay, looking at the electrical and technology systems, um, you can see the, the different areas there. In discussion with, with Nexus, they shared with us that they thought that the electrical service testing, surge protection, and the replacement of the panels, that would be including replacement, that would be more of a priority issue. I didn't speak to Jack and Todd about this one specifically, but it seemed like it kept coming back to, you know, if we were doing additional additions, if we needed more upgrades, um, they're functioning now, but that was something that was noted.
And on that too, um, we had, probably about five years ago, uh, we had a, a storm that knocked out one of the phases going into the building. And we actually, um, we didn't know it for a couple of days, just because the, the right lights weren't off.
True, yeah.
Kinda thing, you know, and, uh, come to find out, when we did notice that there was something wrong, I brought Brett Schneider in and Brett went through the system, and we actually added to the three panels off of the main coming in, uh, the one with all the breakers in it, we did add three surge protectors on each panel. So we do have some surge protection there, um, and that was, uh, that was highly recommended from Mr. Schneider.
And then, um, Sugar Camp Emergency Generator Addition, I think that's something that we, we've talked about, you know, the, Sugar Camp does tend to lose power much more than Three Lakes does, any thoughts on that?
That, that, in, and probably before your time, we did look at putting in a generator into the school, and at that time, it was about twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars, and they kinda tabled that. Yeah, I put that on my list of things to do, and I do wanna follow up and get a cost for replacement in there. Nowadays, that's probably a good idea, I, we did run into a situation where we lost power, when was that, last spring?
It was.
It was last spring.
Last spring.
The big thing is the water.
The water.
Yeah, here's the water.
And starting water, flushing toilets go down, so you don't have, that's.
So I'm gonna resurrect that, and I'll get some pricing on that, that's on my list.
I do think that's something that we should be looking at as a, as a need rather than a, a want, just because Sugar Camp has proven that power does go out, and sometimes it might not be much in one year, and it might be four or five times in another year, depends on, on the spring or the winter.
Actually, didn't you get a call down in the conference when it went out?
I was actually in Lakeland, yep, yep, I was, yep, meeting with our representatives. Looking at the outlet additions, um, yeah, everything probably needs to be updated somewhat, but these are, again, what I would call routine maintenance that you plan for, that you've gotta do, replacement and upgrades as needed. The card access system replacement integrate with the camera system. The camera system in Sugar Camp is fairly new, it's not digital, but it works very well for what it covers. The resolution is good, we do have some areas that needs some additional coverage. I think probably four more cameras is a really good feel for our blind spots, maybe six at some point, but those are very inexpensive in the whole scheme of things. Um, Steve, is there anything that you think we should add to that, as far as your thoughts?
The camera system is fine, um, at some point, from a safety concern, I would want to explore something that works in concert with the doors, the door system, in my opinion, is more deficient than the camera system.
Okay.
We don't have quick control over any of those doors to block or unlock it, it's a one to two minute process, and you know, in an emergency, we're not gonna be able to do that fast enough, so we need, we need to explore that for sure. I'm not worried about the cameras as much as.
As the.
The door system, and ideally, the door system would integrate with the camera, so it was all one, one functioning interface that you didn't have to go to two separate places to manage. But that's not a small ticket item.
No.
Because that's, that's not just Sugar Camp, that's the whole, the whole district.
Right, right, and that falls under safety too, as well as the electrical.
Interior, and before we saw this, I did talk with Richard at Paladin, who's, does our cameras, and he's known as he needs to work out a book for adding the four cameras, we actually have a plan for it, uh, we're just not sure where the cameras are gonna go yet, we have a couple, uh, an idea too, uh, but that's, that's in the works.
Okay. Questions to this point? The building envelope, um, listed here is the concrete masonry, repointing, uh, sealant repair and lintel replacement. Functional, but as they told us, there, there is some areas that there's deterioration, some cracking. Jack or Todd, anything further on that? I don't, it's not like it's crumbling or falling down, but is that kind of stuff you wanna keep an eye on?
We definitely have some spots that we, we need to watch, um, for future stuff, not many. I mean, uh, we have a couple rust spots, um, on supports of the, the windows that we need to wire brush off this coming summer, and we'll get them repainted, uh, and as far as the concrete, uh, there's some areas that show somewhere, but they're on you, they're on the building that's sixty years old, and, um, you know, uh, at some point in time, we're gonna have, probably have to address that, uh, but.
Okay.
Did we just replace a window or two?
Many.
I was gonna say a lot of it.
Yeah, this is like the last one.
In Sugar Camp, no, we have them all replaced, except for Todd's office and by Angie's office, I believe. So all of the, all of the windows in the building have gone away from those crankouts. Um, and we, we kinda got away from that for two reasons. One, they weren't sealed very good and they were rotting out, especially on the north side. You could actually take a, a screwdriver and stick it almost to the outside from the inside of the room. The other thing was with the crankouts, that lower window opens up into the playground at eye level. I never understood that, and, uh, we foresaw, or saw that as a safety hazard. Also, you couldn't get, if they, kids had to get out of that room through a window, that would've been hard to do with the crankouts. And with the lifts that we now have, we just, we, you could basically jump right through the screen once the window's open, for the safety of the kids to get home.
And that's something that's been in the regular maintenance plan that Jack and I have talked about with Todd each year, and put into the plan to, to get it done, you know.
So there's really only a couple of windows left, it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Um, exterior door repairs, repainting, um, aware of what that needs to be, to be taken care of, nothing really big deal.
Nothing really big there, um, that's on the normal painting schedule for the summer anyways.
Okay, and then site and civil, they've got several things listed here, but these are all things that we already are aware of and have been planning to address, um, there's some bigger ticket money attached to that, and again, remember, these are just projections and everything, but we do know that there is some, um, need to do the, the grade away from the building. We've got that in the works, kind of.
Yeah, and that's been in the works since last year, um, actually had Ryan Pitlick come out with me, and kinda look and make some suggestions on what we need to do, and kind of, we've kinda held back from putting any kind of money into that till we know what we're doing with the footing of the building, you know, because if we were at some point in time gonna put a, a four K addition on, we didn't wanna put, you know, five thousand dollars into the ground and a year later rip it up, so.
But there's been work done with that, even with the updates and enhancements to the playground, there's been additional work that's been done right along too. Sugar Camp has done a real fine job of keeping up, you know, with where we're at, so, these aren't surprises, um, they do need to be dealt with. In the, uh, SC, SC four A or four B, you would choose one of those, uh, it's either gonna be one deep in the French drain and swale, or a new French drain and pipe, that, they made that clear to us, it's not both of them, it would be one or the other, in consideration of which way you would go. The preference according to Nexus's engineers would be to go with four B, the changing it to a new one, because then it would be improved, it would be deeper, it would be, um, serve the purpose better. Jack, thoughts on that one? You don't see it as a highly critical need at the moment?
Not right now.
Okay.
No.
I mean, it is, it's identified, but.
Yeah.
It's working?
Yes.
It's functioning?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on site and civil? Okay, interior finishes and ADA, um, this has it listed as high priority ceilings, flooring and walls. Those were areas that it was suggested to us were considered more of a high pri- order, priority area. I would still say that in our maintenance plan, it's, we've done a good job, our ceilings do need to be worked on there. It's been, you can tell that when we took the tour, you know, it's kinda like that's the one thing that's left out there. Um, the lighting is done, the flooring looks really nice in the wings, the flooring when you first come in, which we wanna know what we're going to do bigger wise with that ta- that tile, that needs to be addressed. So there are some needs there, or some, I don't know if I should call it a need or a want, because it's functional, but it would tie it nicely together.
Right.
And bring the aesthetics into place, so those, I think, are, are good sightings in that area. Uh, none of us, unless Todd, I'm gonna put you on the spot, suggested the removing of the wood paneling in the kindergarten. I don't, in fact, I remember us talking about how it's kinda nice and cozy with that, that feel, um, so that to me was not, that was a surprise, but, um.
I thought Julie liked it, I think that's more coming from Nexus.
I think so too.
Something with more of a.
Modernized, maybe, yeah.
I don't mind it.
Yeah. And then, uh, they felt that the, the doors, um, in the classrooms, et cetera, were not high priority. Neither were the casework or the shelving. The casework and shelving is all in, it's in good condition, it's maybe not as modern as some of that, but it's certainly not what you would call a high need, it's working and functional.
The doors, you just, you, you've done some refinishing in the doors over the last several years.
Yes, and that, that's on the list again this summer, um, we're, we're hopefully gonna turn some of our priorities uh, over to each classroom now with the painting, kind of to tie into the, what we've done in the hallways. And when we do that, uh, the plan is to work on the inside of the doors and, uh, the frames, and then to clean them up. I just, I looked at one today, and it, it needs refinishing, um, it needs some work on it. It functions, it does what it does, but it can look nice, and, and that's the direction I'm hoping to go with our extra person we have this summer.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll get down to the educational adequacy and site updates. The first one listed is the secure entry office and waiting area remodeled, um, as Nexus has shared with us. They put lines on paper so we get an idea. I do think that it's something that we are aware of, that in the buildings, we wanna have those secure entryways. I'm not committed to exactly how it's, um, put in the plans, that that's exactly what we'd wanna do, I think there's some other options, there's some potential, you know, that it might not be as costly and still be very effective, and that's when we get more into the weeds and can get more information for you. But I do think that our district and our board is committed to looking at those secure entry areas. Just because, as Mike used, put it so well, a couple of days ago, it's, if something would go wrong, and you'd say, well, what if, you know, we're, we're aware of it, we are very lucky, we are very fortunate, we have good visibility. In Sugar Camp, even though it feels a little bit out in the country and removed, Angie has eyes right on through that window, so there's a good visibility factor there that isn't the case in many situations, but it is something we should look at. And again, this is one of those areas, when you look at the price tag, Caleb and I talked about it again, we really wanna look at our fund that we have put away, you know, we've, we've been careful, we've been aware of some of these things coming up. Is it in the plan that it's something that we wanna do, but can we do it within our budgeted means already? Or is it something that we would have to consider reaching out for, so. Questions or comments on that one?
I guess if I had to pick one thing for that school, I, I mean, that would probably be.
Rise to the top.
Would be it.
Yeah.
I mean, that, and, and like you say, it ties in that whole, the tile in the front and everything, you know, you can kinda make that one big, you know, one project.
Mm-hmm. And really update it and give it a nice face lift with.
Just a nice, yeah, a nice welcome feel rather than.
Yeah, yeah.
Kinda shut off.
Agreed. Um, the special education suite and remodel, um, I'm going to let Carrie answer any questions that you have with this, or Todd as well. Carrie and I had a really good conversation again, uh, I guess it was yesterday, it all blends together. And when we talk about needs and wants, the, the thing is, the special ed areas that we're talking about are already within the footprint of the school, so that's very different than a build-on, um, that's more of a remodel, and some of that can be done right within, you know, the planning and the vision here. Again, I think it's something that we should be looking at with our current funding, or do we need to be looking at reaching out for a little bit more support for that, but it's more of a doable thing. And Carrie said, what it comes right down to it, is it an absolute need? Well, it's functioning, it's been working, we know we're very tight on space in Sugar Camp, we, that is a fact, but is the business gonna stop operating tomorrow? No, we just wanna be thinking about how it can be better used, better utilized for our students. Carrie, did you wanna share more on that?
I guess I'll just add that the, the current space is functional, um, there's, you know, not like, um, separate bathroom or anything if they were to have toileting needs specific to a student.
Right.
In special education, um, but I think it's, it's functional for our current programming, and the, a lot of the programming in all of our buildings happens within the regular classroom, and there is still some, some pull-out services, or there are still some pull-out services, but the, the current space serves its function for the most part. Todd, anything you wanna add to that?
If I could ask a question related to that, are there some things that are more difficult or more challenging to address in terms of a special ed child's needs in Sugar Camp versus Three Lakes?
What would you say?
Can you repeat that, Mike?
Yeah, you know, for, for our special education program, we just, you know, you know, because of the, the limited space, I'm just wondering if that has any, um, if it's detrimental or more challenge for you to serve a particular student, um, that would have, uh, a special education need in, in Three Lakes? Well, I should say, in, in, in Sugar Camp versus Three Lakes, do you have, I guess, the same opportunities to work with a child?
Well, I, I think if you look at it that way, like if, if, you know, speech and language is there, at the same time OT is there and PT is there, as well as the special education teacher, we would be limited on space. I mean, they make it work right now, and they share space within kinda that special education suite right now. But it is a little bit more challenging when all of the therapies are there at one time, because there really aren't any open rooms for them to go to.
Yeah, I would agree.
Do you agree with that, Todd?
Yeah, I think the big limiting thing is just room available, you know, being available. We might have a parent taking a group of kids and working in our conference room, and then we might have another one in the library, we might have some in the kids' lab, but you know, it's just not a private setting all the time. I mean, right now, when guidance is there, speech is doing their work in the library. We're kinda fortunate, we're, scheduling allows that to happen, but it's also kind of a public area that.
Right, yeah.
So you can speech with, you know.
I mean, even within that suite, it could probably be broken down a little bit differently to allow for some separate spaces.
And that's kinda what I like, because our title room is quite large for.
Yeah.
That area, um, our guidance slash speech room could be split, I mean, there, they can be smaller spaces. That's, that's something I did pick out that I, I thought was a good idea.
And it's also, we're, if we're talking about our, um, kids right now, it's working, but we could have a student, or two, or three come in that need much more specialized services and a more individualized classroom. And no, there really isn't, if I had to say, well, this is the room you go to, I'd be hard pressed to say where that would be at this point.
Yeah.
That there isn't space for that, that's designated appropriately for that.
So it's working, but it's, it definitely has some limiting factors.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
And then, uh, just going down here, the list, the STEM and conference room upgrades, uh, those are, they're nice, but the, the STEM lab is still, it's there, it's, it's functional, it's usable. I think we would wanna do a little bit more deeper look at that before, what would we want to do with it, would be the question, you know? What is it that's missing, what would we really wanna see added? Is it actually plumbing so you could have that, that wet, you know, sink and, and counter area? Or if so, then why, you know, we need to have more information to go with that. And then going down to the next one, the kindergarten four K. And then going down to the next one, the kindergarten 4K toilet room. I do think that this is in agreement with all of us, that that is a a priority. And that is a remodel, that we would really like to see that Jack and Jill, as they call it, bathroom between the 4K and the kindergarten where there is a janitor's closet and storage. Um, one main reason is supervision. It's, it doesn't seem like it would be a big deal to take a kid out into the hallway and stuff, but it really is having those eyes on. And they are little people, you know, they require a lot more supervision and just convenience. And we're getting more kids in that sometimes the potty training and that is part of what they're learning is. So I think that's a realistic need. Todd and Jack, Carrie, do you wanna add anything more to that?
I agree with that.
I've heard you on mine.
Okay.
Was there a pun intended?
I I have already, like yesterday, went through and measured out that room.
Oh.
And kinda made some contacts on suggestions on converting that into a bathroom. So I think it's a project that we can fully handle and get taken care of.
For fifty-nine thousand?
So I, the big thing right now, I'm just trying to figure, we're trying to find out where the main septic underground piping would be that we would have to tie into with the toilet.
Jack, would you say that fifty-nine thousand would be higher than you'd expect it to be for us?
I would say that's a little high for a bathroom, considering that you're. And one thing I I'm checking on, and I talked to Todd about this yesterday. I wanna make sure the numbers of the people that it serves that were good with just like a one stall area. And there's some added costs if we'd have to put like a divider in it and stuff like that. So I'm trying to find what our bare minimum is, but still make it a functioning area. And then, uh, I'm hoping fairly soon that we we can come back with it. Personally, I think that's kinda high just for a bathroom.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Suppose it all, it's all gonna depend on that, that the septic.
Yeah.
Yeah, where are you tying it? You know, we, when we moved that septic tank this past summer, uh, the metal one. And when we moved that, uh, we were sized, I think we're, it's a hundred and fifty people that that septic system serviced. I'd have to double check, but we were over anything that we thought we'd have inside. That's why we thought we could put an addition over there in case we wanted to, otherwise we might have the size tank that we didn't. For future growth. So I think we're fine with it, but wanna make sure everything's crossed and dotted and. And I said, it's just a bathroom, but it gets down to it, unless they say we need something else in there. But the the room is fairly large, it's ten, ten foot, six inches by eleven foot, six inches, I believe. You know, and it's got two doors, one from each side, so that we wouldn't have to add anything there, which would really save some costs. But soon we'll have some information on that one.
More questions on that or? That doesn't mean it's going to happen immediately, it's just one of those that rise more to the the top. And I would say there should also be the consideration of a changing station, and we have to keep thinking about the ADA compliance too. Because we do have some older areas in Sugar Camp that we wanna get up to speed with that.
So Todd, your number one was the special education suite?
No, that'll be secure entry. Secure entry was one, 4K slash 4K bathroom would be two, and sped would probably be three.
What was three?
The special education.
Your organization or even just dividers or whatever.
Okay.
And then the next, the last ones are looking at what would be addition. Oh, actually, I missed one, 4K classroom, toilet, storage, addition. That would be actually adding a another classroom on. That was one of the original discussions that we had before we were even, you know, really involved in that. And there was a price take with that there, that would be expanding the current classroom, I believe that is there. Todd and Jack, is that what you remembered us being?
Mine what? Sorry.
The the addition here that it's talking about, where the the 4K classroom toilet addition.
Yeah, that was the extra big room.
Yeah, that's.
You'd have the 4K current room would be open and then that would be like adding.
The additional.
From the kitchen area, like a a full-size classroom basically for 4K with a bathroom in that room is what it was.
Which you'd be talking then about walls and roofs or roofing and stuff like that.
And we kinda had a rough estimate of that.
Yeah, we had a different.
During COVID.
Yeah, we did.
From green fire.
But it's still, it's it's not cheap. And um, I would say it's it's something we should be considering in the future. When we were going to all-day 4K, I was really very concerned, as you all know, about the space and especially the layout of that one room. But we also know that there's the potential of, it doesn't have to necessarily be that room, and this would be something we wanted. We wanted to be that area of that bathroom is going in there, that that's a consideration. But we had also looked at the art room, that that's a bigger room too, if we needed to do that. And as Todd and I have talked about, there may be coming the time. We have these bumps in class sizes where you have a bigger class and then a smaller class. It might result in, the teacher's gonna have to be the swap of the room, the kids are gonna be in the space that fits them. And the teacher's gonna have to make the swap. And that's not pleasant, but it's certainly doable, you know? But for future consideration, I think you wanna potentially look at any of these thoughts of additioning if we're talking about academic space. But I don't know exactly what that looks like or when that would be. Something we wouldn't wanna jump into too quickly. Thoughts on that at the current time, or that you would like me to do some more pursuing on that?
I'm kinda putting a lot of this into one package, I guess, in my mind. So, um, what about, um, I don't see anything dedicated in terms of, um, addressing children's mental health needs and such like that. Do we have an area specifically for?
I don't think that was included in this plan, other than it would be our school counselor office. And that would be a split from the current, um, speech and language room, because they're together right now.
Okay, so it's kind of a shared space?
It is a shared space, they're there on, generally, they're there on opposite days, except maybe one.
Yeah.
Yeah. But no, there is not a dedicated space for that, Mike.
Okay, things are tight.
They're very tight, yeah.
I think that was one of the, that was one of their suggestions was, again, adding a divider in one of the rooms. One of the larger rooms to make a, yeah.
Splitting some of those.
Like the one thing they were looking at, this guidance room, and they're just putting up a wall to make a sensory room.
Yeah.
And then there was shared, the thoughts that we we want to look at doing a cafeteria with a multipurpose room addition. That was put in the plans. That was separate then from what would be looked at as an additional gym addition. One section, two section, or a gym addition with the cafeteria upgrades. Those came in with really big price tags, and I think that was for the purposes of if we're looking to the future and, you know, the, we were told, think big, et cetera. My general thought on that is if we're looking at gymnasium expansion, it would make more sense that it would be on this facility here where the varsity and JV sports occur. I would think rather than in Sugar Camp, though it would be nice to have additional space. I do think that there's some room for improvement within the current gym that could give a little bit of space and options there. But that would be something that you guys would need to, you know, help me with feedback and what you would kinda like to see as a direction.
So I I guess from what I've heard in the past, there's been a couple of things that have been a challenge. One, anytime there's some kind of an assembly, um, the seating is somewhat inadequate in terms of capacity, is that? You got, I don't know, is it three rows of bleachers? Is it, yeah, three?
Most, usually our kids are the ones on the bleachers and they all fit.
Yeah.
Their population of about a hundred and twenty kids and then teachers on the bleachers.
But that's it, I mean, that's.
Anything bigger than that, we we put out chairs.
Yeah.
We've got eighty chairs and for special occasions, say like grandparents' day. We work very close with Mike Cortoff at the Town Shop. And we never have a problem grabbing chairs or from from over there. And I think we moved a hundred chairs over there.
It was a lot, yeah.
Yeah, it was a lot.
Plus some tables.
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day and then, um, grandparents' day is the big one as far as seating goes. But I mean, in the genders, we added, I think, four extra tables this year, or maybe six extra tables. We had enough room for two chairs. Really, the only concert we have is our spring concert, and that gets pretty full. Veterans Day is pretty full.
It gets small. But we do make it work.
Grandparents' Day, and then our Christmas concert's over here, so.
I mean, is there things that you don't do just because of space?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, just a little more work to get it done.
That's why, I mean, we're fortunate to have the town hall close where we.
Yes.
Hold up checks, pickup truck, and bring stuff over, so.
Chairs and such?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, we don't have storage for an extra rack of chairs. You know, we don't have storage for twenty collapsible tables just for grandparents' day, you know, so it's unfortunate.
And really, the the two times that we do move chairs over is two times a year. If if we had our own auditorium, I'm sure we'd use it, but we don't have one. And for the few times, I think that we would use it, I don't know if you could justify the cost of something.
So other thoughts on these last items here? Is that something that you would like to see investigated or explored further for future construction or building project? Or is that something that is not? I mean, you don't need, we shouldn't be making decisions now, but I'm just kinda looking for direction.
We're basically exploring, I guess, at this point.
Right.
So, I think we're looking at, go ahead, Todd.
I had a thought on the gym a little bit. I know one of the big things that we wanted is more seating for youth sports. Just sitting in there watching those kids play, like, not one of them is gonna shoot a three, right? So if you narrow the court down, change the lines a little bit and just shrink that, you can put bleachers on the opposite side. I mean, there's no reason why you need twenty-five feet from the hoop in order to shoot an NBA three. I mean, that gym's not regulation size anyways, if you're narrowing it down, we're doing, I think we're redoing lines anyways this year. It's refinishing. You narrow down, then you have to put bleachers on both sides, and then you're supporting elementary kids. You're still able to have, if they're rolled up, you're still able to have junior high practices. It's just changing lines, but.
Okay. Appreciate that thought. Sometimes you gotta be creative, right?
I I played in plenty of gyms that were, I mean, you had like the top of the key and then you were out of bounds. You know, there was no shooting more than threes, so. To save one point eight million.
Case we go to three, three-man basketball?
You're not gonna, you're not gonna host a sectional final game in the elementary gym, right? I mean, you will host plenty of youth basketball games, and those youth basketball games are not gonna be, unless there's a third grader that's shooting twenty-five-foot jump shots that I don't know about. I don't know if a full-size, regulation-wide gym is necessary. Narrow it down, then you can put your bleachers in.
Is there a way to look at it, at like courses of action from the staff when we look at this school, right? So we have held the the gamut from seven million down to, you know, eight thousand six hundred. Is there a way to look at, like, this is a need, this is another option, and then this is like a grand option, right? Because before we go to community survey, we might, we might have people in the community that are interested in their Texas going up to have an additional, you know, million-dollar classroom area. But if we had it in a way like good, better, best to present to the community, this is too much at some level. Like, I'm looking through this and going through all of the things they said, I think it's too much information.
Well, and that's why it's for you all to be deciding where we wanna go with this. That's why I said I wouldn't be comfortable with a community survey based on this, because how would you possibly decide? And you don't even know the the budget carry impact.
For me, looking at this, I'm like, air conditioning, two million dollars, is it that hot? Like, let's get real. But like, even for us looking at these, some of these things are. It could, you could. Right, so can we have something from the staff? Like, having Todd say, one, two, three, like, these are my priorities, I think that helps.
Yeah.
Um, from my perspective, to know what the administrator truly needs.
Yep.
If we're looking at ensuring that we're, um, doing everything in connection with ADA and how we're upgrading and separating classrooms, I think that's, that's a hot ticket.
Yep, and I think you heard his his top three, and that's what we agreed on, you know? That's what we're sharing with you, is if we had to say this is what we really see as the needs to be where we need to be, that's, that kinda hits them.
I think it would just be good to see that almost like that's the option. These are the things that we have to have based on the administration. And then this is something that if given the money and opportunity in support of the community, this would be another option. Because I think it would be great for us to have more sports access in Sugar Camp. We have a lot of people in the area that can use those, there's a community aspect to it too, as far as using gym space. But what what's the kind of administrator priority?
I think that what, uh, just personally, what I've been hearing is, you know, a lot of this stuff is already on the, it's already on the docket. You know, there's, there's a small number of these which are just obscene. And unnecessary, that, you know, there's, there's a good number of these that are already on our lists and on our radar. I mean, personally, I I think that, at least like getting to your point here, I mean, basically, I think the last four items, maybe last five items would be, well, three of the last five items would probably be those items like you're talking about, that we would, we could introduce. I mean, if it's something that we wanted to take there, that those would be the ones that we would say, okay. You know, if we had to do this, this is what we'd be looking at for these things.
Great, and this is one of those out of your pocket, though.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
If you want this, this is what the test.
I mean, 'cause, yeah, I mean, so much of this stuff is, yeah, it's just your, it's just your normal maintenance stuff that any, any school that's doing what they should be doing, and we are, or seem to be.
Yep.
Should be doing anyways. You know, it's, you know, I think that's what they're, I think that's what they're trying to really sell us on is these big pieces.
I I think, uh, I like the idea of coming back to us with, um, a list of the priorities. A lot of this, from what I'm picturing in my mind, has to do with a lot of the interior of of the building. And, you know, if you remodel one room, where do you stop and start, I guess, kind of a thing? I guess kind of a thing. Is there a better use of the space if, I don't know if we have an option of moving walls or, or anything of that matter? Or if we have to work within our existing wall structure? Do we have any options there?
It depends on where they are.
Okay.
You know, you would have to look at each individual case.
Yeah.
Especially with the older building compared to the newer building.
Yeah.
Sections of the, that are there.
Yeah, 'cause if you're going to do something with the entrance and we talked, you know, there was some support, it sounded like, for the, the commons area there, all right? Looking at that and remodeling that, the sped area, you know, looking at the counseling, the guidance counselor area, making sure there's adequate space so that students don't have to use a, a public area, I guess. If, if I'm doing speech therapy, I would like to be in a, in a room that's, I can focus on the student and the student can focus on me and I don't have to try to do this out in the public. I think that would be important. So I think there's a number of things in my mind that you, you bring up good things that need to be addressed and it's kind of, in my mind, it's going to be hard to stop and start. Well, it's just going to be, we're just going to look at this section and, well, if you do that, how is that going to affect the room adjoining to that? You know, you talked about bathrooms as well. So I guess, starting off with those list of priorities and then how does that affect something adjoining to it that, all right, well, this isn't a high need in this area, but as long as we're doing it, kind of a thing, maybe we should do it now. But...
And we can bring that to you. I think you kind of feel for what we see as the list of priorities of Sugar Camp right now. I don't think administration is going to be comfortable giving you a recommendation, recommendation on a gymnasium addition because those are big-ticket items and would be way beyond what even myself would feel comfortable. Because I have to be able, able to justify to the public. If I'm asked, well, why would that be in Sugar Camp and not on the Three Lakes campus? I would want to have some really good reasoning behind that. Not that I'm not saying that we need more gym space and it is very heavily used in Sugar Camp. And I like Todd's idea that there are some options, especially seating capacity and such, but we've got to think about a bigger picture, too.
Exactly.
My question, as long as we're kind of here, the north wall of the gym, is that, is that a load-bearing? I mean, is that something that could be opened up?
It's just a tall wall. They would have to put structure, structure into it for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, 'cause that's...
Yeah, I know there'd be, I, obviously, there'd be some, yeah. But I mean, if it's something where...
I'd have to look, see which way they're running the trusses. I think they're running the trusses north of self often that long.
Yeah. I was thinking the same.
You know, 'cause one of my, you know, my initial, my initial thought, and I thought the most, while it's still a lot of money, the most reasonable would be the 4K and cafeteria add. And then if we could knock out that north wall, put some structure, open that up, because then some of the 4K, the current 4K could maybe get reutilized for fact, or facility and, and conference room space. Or we could kind of change the hallway or, you know, open that up so it's kind of, you know, what?
It does have potential.
It, yeah, I think we could probably, possibly do, do a lot and not compromise too much for a much lower price tag than, like you say, adding on an entire gym.
Would that be part of the priority list, do you think, Josh? Or would it be something?
It all depends on what the 4K situation...
You see those tied together?
Kind of. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do something big, if we're gonna do some construction and if we're gonna be spending on some bigger-ticket stuff, you know, like you say, it's kind of trying to lump some things together here and make it...
If you're going in.
Make it, yeah, if you're going in, you might as well make it, you might as well go all in. To what, to what your budget can handle.
The common denominator is you don't, there's not enough space.
Right.
So
Right.
The only way to get that is through construction.
Is to add space, right.
You can only play chess so much with the building as it is.
As we know, Sugar Camp's space issues are much different than Three Lakes.
Correct.
You know, we are kind of fully immersed in what we've got. And that doesn't mean that it's actually adequate. Case in point, our 4K classroom right now.
You know, it, it's been brought up that it works. We can make it work. You know, and thankfully, we've had the staff and, and the will to do that. But is that giving our students really what they deserve?
And this is, remember, this is a plan of phases, too.
It's correct.
We're looking not just today, but we're looking ten years down the road as well.
Right. I mean, the building is
What we want it to be.
Last been remodeled in ninety-two additions. I mean, so... So, I mean, we've done well. So...
So what I'm hearing you say is that we work with the team and then bring back to you some more specifics as far as what we see as the priorities and how that could look together. And maybe even some ideas of how a 4K addition with the expansion of the cafeteria would maybe tie into that as a more encompassing project.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other input? Michelle?
Ideas are always good and it's always good to explore all avenues.
Okay. All right. Stacy?
I'm good with the directory.
Alicia, anything else on...
I do have a question, 'cause I was not here for the original process with Nexus. So it was brought up at last meeting, the agreement and the contract for, so what happens if, after that they've put this together, we don't agree to these?
I, I did put it in your board docs just today in case you were wondering. There is a walkaway fee. It's about seven thousand five hundred dollars that we pay for this document and then that, that's where it ends. What they would request is that we would be developing plans that they've given to us should we go further or they're doing some architectural work and stuff, that we would be using them rather than going with a different company. That, to me, is very different and I read it closely again today. And projects that we are already involved in, already in our maintenance plans are excluded from that work.
We brought that up during
Correct, yeah.
The, the meeting that we signed a contract. That the track was also part of that discussion as well.
Right.
So, yeah.
I've got one last question about Sugar Camp. Sorry, I know we need to move on to, but is there any discussions about cafeteria, that, or I'm sorry, actual kitchen upgrades or changes? Because I know that that's some struggle there.
Yeah, that, that was within, that was within one of the plans that, I think, with the multipurpose.
Yeah, do we have, I mean, do we have something in, I mean, for what's currently there if we were to do nothing?
No, we haven't, we haven't explored that yet.
Okay.
Jack, unless you and I haven't talked about it, but I didn't think so.
Not, not for a long time.
Okay.
When I first was hired, that was one of the things that Dr. Carlin said was going to happen and it never went any further.
Okay. Terry, do you have enough information from the board in terms of input as far as what needs to be looked at in Sugar Camp?
Yep, I feel I do.
Okay. All right. Any other last-minute suggestions, questions on Sugar Camp before we move to Three Lakes? All right. Remitage?
All right, I'm going to rely on both Dave and Justin and, and others to help Steve as well. It starts off, you know, it says the Three Lakes Elementary and Junior, Senior High. Looking at the mechanical systems again, there's a long list of things that are included here. But when we talked with Nexus, only a couple of them were listed by them as a priority. And that was, the first one was the heating water system improvements similar to Sugar Camp. And I haven't spoken with Dave specifically on that one, but I know he has that background knowledge to address that. So, Dave, in looking at the, the listing and such, what are, what would you like us to be thinking about? As far as the boiler and the pump replacements, the glycol addition and the, the filters? How is our system?
I think, I think I'm in the same boat with Jack there as we talked about with the glycol. In my, in my schooling, the glycol actually added, it was a hindrance because it was actually took another ten percent of efficiency out of the system instead of adding it. For my, maybe that's old school, maybe it's new glycol, I don't know. But, but some of that stuff, you know, and with the boilers that we have, I, in the time that I've been here, I've never seen all of them run at once, you know, because they're able to handle the demand and they interchange, so they, they change lead boiler after X amount of hours. And so, but that being said, there are, we, we have been looking at getting them replaced. We haven't still haven't gotten a bid yet from Tweed and Garrett yet, which used to be mechanical ink out of Town Hall. And so, I'm still waiting for a bid for that to replace a couple of those boilers. We're actually having to look at the plant as far as upgrading the whole system. So we haven't gotten that far, I haven't gotten that quote for them yet.
Are all six boilers the same age?
We had, we had two heat exchangers failed that were replaced, but the other components were all in that same, the rest of the component stayed, just two exchangers changed. And now we have two that are down right now because of the same kind of heat exchange issue. And we didn't want to replace that if we were going to look at
Sure. New.
Those others, right. Didn't want to do that expensive if we were to do the other.
Okay, so we're running on four boilers right now?
Pumps-wise, we, we're using the old Grendfoss pumps or the old Bell and Gossett pumps, excuse me. They're not a direct-drive belt, or not a direct-drive pump. Because then now we're, the only thing with those is that we're replacing couplers every once in a while. Coupler goes bad, so we changed that out on that system. As far as the other, if you take a look at the first page, those first two pumps, those two pumps you see there, those are, they switch, they switch also. They, the blue one will run for X amount of time, then the red one will run. So those tie into the same system, so those, those operate. And we replaced some parts on one of them two years ago and they're, they're in good, they're still in good shape, so.
So at, at this point, we're currently looking, getting a quote on replacing all six. Is that...
Right, right.
Okay.
And Dave, that's in our current plan for budgeting?
Correct, correct.
Our deferred maintenance and such?
Correct. Domestic hot water, we have two under-tailing that do the, the hot water for around the, the school and then we have one that serves the kitchen area, a different one. So those are, those are five years or a year.
Okay, so the boilers aren't serving the hot water needs?
They're domestic water, no.
Okay. Separate system. Okay.
Okay, and then there's the air conditioning addition. Existing air handling units without cooling includes variable frequency drives. That's got a two million, two-point-six-million dollar on that. In discussion with Nexus the other day, it was a future project. It wasn't a current one. Dave comments on that?
Areas that we have air conditioning right now are the admin office here, the high school office, the high school IMC and the elementary IMC. Those are the air conditioning areas right now in the school.
Okay.
And as of right now, those, I haven't heard a lot of complaints about people being hot and, you know, you catch it, but it's, it's not, it's not like it's overwhelming. So I guess that's, you know, we talk, well, the auditorium is also air conditioning. The, you know, we talked about the gymnasium, you know, we talked about that for graduation, you know, we use it for one, one time a year for, for the, the air conditioning for that. That's kind of, it would be kind of overkill. We have a nice spring day, we can cool the building down during the evening and keep it closed and we can normally stay fairly nice, but make everybody sweat a little bit. But any other thing else? Any, you, you office? No, the elementary office isn't either. You're not in that building? Yeah, yeah. That just goes to elementary IMC. So those are the areas that are air conditioning. Those units are, they were put in when, oh, probably, probably in the, when this addition was put in, in the nineties, ninety-three, ninety...
On the upgrade line, it says nineteen ninety-three.
Yeah, and so we guess it was probably ninety-three. We do have, with the last, that one storm that came through, we do have a new unit that serves the high school office and the, and the high school IMC. We do have a new unit that serves that because they got taken out with the, with the tree and fell off the curb and things like that. So we did give it, give it for that. But that's, that was two years ago, we have. So, but otherwise, those other three are, are the ninety-three vintage. And we've been, they, we've, we've done some things to them and they've been running. We've been fortunate. So it's, it's again, one of those things. I think the, the train unit that's serving in this area has our twenty-two in it, refrigerant. And so that's the same, same vintage, probably the ninety-three vintage. Serves this area.
So can we serve, I guess, the educational spaces by ventilation instead of air conditioning?
On, if the outside air temperature is right, if the, if the temperature and the humidity is, is okay, then we can, we can ventilate that way, yes. But if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna ventilate, if we're gonna bring seventy-degree air at sixty percent humidity in, they're gonna be more uncomfortable than if we kept it not.
So I guess we're jumping a little bit into the ventilation, but I'm going to ask it anyways. I asked the same, asking you the same question. If you had to put it in percentage... If you had to put it in percentage, you know, what days are, are we having issues in the course of the school year, what would you say?
I don't hear a lot of it. These who warm, these guys may hear more of it than I do.
Are you asking whether it's too warm?
Too warm or too cold, one of the, yeah, just discomfort?
What Todd said with the warm, it's probably less than 5%. I, I feel like the, the cold that we had, like when the teachers did the survey, I think with whatever the new regulation system they put in last year, I don't think we have as many issues with heat right now that we did in prior years. There's still, some corner rooms get a little cooler than others, but for the most part, it's, I, I feel like it's pretty good at the moment.
Okay.
And Justin?
I would agree 5% less on the warm complaints. And probably 90% of the heat complaints I get come in the early season. Volleyball invitational we host. And that, and that's, that's not staff, that's not a learning day. You know, that's not, when we have little ones, not little ones in, in the school. That, that's a preschool year, because it's always hotter than the blazes. And then, like you said, when it's hot outside and you're ventilating into the gym, that's the area you're getting in. But the amount of complaints we get, less than 5% of the days and certainly not $2.683 million worth of complaints.
It's hot in football pads in August outside, too.
You got it.
The older end with where the English rooms are, like when you walk through there in the fall and spring, I would say that's different than like the core areas over here as far as airflow.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, it's definitely, there's definitely more fans down there, more humidity, less airflow.
Yep.
So I, I couldn't speak to that because I'm not in that area that much.
All right, those are you, the heaters in there in the rooms?
Yeah.
What, junior high?
To your top complaints.
Junior high, same? Okay.
So where are we at?
Kind of ran, I think we kind of merged into the upgrade a little bit.
I think so, yeah, so.
Being 1993, I mean, is that something that's kind of on the list to upgrade a lot of the deferred maintenance? Or are we kind of hanging on, or is that one of those things?
You know, it, it's always that, it's a flip of the coin. It's either a Miami, Miami night or emergency. And if, if we, you know, and they're not small ticket items. I mean, they're, you know, the change those air conditioners is, is, they help each other change, you know? And there's a lot involved with it. So if, if it's one of those things that we want to put on them, we only can plan for it and.
But it's not current, it's not in the current plan?
Right, we're, we're just, you know, correct.
So they work now, I guess the question is, is just the when they don't work?
Exactly, exactly.
They need to be on a plan? Yeah.
Right.
Right, that's the, that's the question, do they need to be on a plan? Right.
Yeah, and I would say yes, but I said we, we should probably look at it that way. You know, so, so it is a planned event, it's other emergencies, so not caught, you know, so.
Right, yeah.
Maybe one at a time or something here?
Yeah, and if we could do one at a time, yes, you know. Because it's gonna involve, crane here, is it, is it's gonna be?
Yeah.
Okay, so are we on then the replace the built up air handling unit with two units serving the junior high gym? And the classrooms and add air conditioning at 1.5?
Yeah, I would say.
That's what I think we're on.
Yep.
That was not listed as prioritized at this point by the Nexus discussion, but I don't know what our thoughts are. Dave, I'll ask you to share with us again on that, too. Is the junior high gym and that area, being the older area, I guess I have more concern about that space than many of the spaces in our district.
Well, we, we call that unit the beast because it has 72 air filters on it.
Wow.
And you will actually walk right inside of it. And it serves the tunnels, because there's tunnels that go around the perimeter of it. And so, plus, and then as you look in the gym, there's those two duct chases that are on the south wall that go up and the supply ducts are on the outside. So that beast unit, it has some, it has some heating coils, and they, they call it a hot and cold deck. And so what it does, it either circulates the air or the dampers close and it bring in outside air, or they bring in the hot deck, which we own, and they open up the dampers and they bring across the heating coils. And so as that air passes through that, you know, we just have coils, pumps, and squirrel case. I don't, to, to replace it, I, I don't know if I would, I would go that route. It's, it's, it would be a big undertaking. Because if you separated the gym by itself and then did the classrooms by itself, you know, is that what they would do? I don't know. But that, the heating portion of that is run off the boiler system and things like that, so.
Was that the heating what?
The, the heating portion of that is run off the boilers.
Yeah.
So they're going through, through hot water coils. And we, we serve those then, so.
So this beast that you talk about is basically a filter housing that basically filters all the air that gets ventilated through the building?
Yeah, you take a look on, on the east wall of the gym, there's, there's five registers in there that are probably 30 by 30 or so. And that's where all the air comes into it. And then there's one big one right between Bodis's and Terry Lovetsky's office or lab, Terry Lovetsky's lab. There's a big return that's in the hallway, that's the whole thing to the hall, a whole height to the hallway. That pulls in there also. And that, that, that's what serves that unit. And so to control it any different, I don't know what, how, what we would do, how that would improve, I guess.
So that's not one that we're looking at as far as deferred maintenance and such, that's just?
No, we're just, we're just keeping maintain, we're just maintaining that.
And it's working?
Yeah.
All right, the 1956 unit ventilator conversion to displacement ventilation, VAV central system?
Those are, those are all the, 56 wing, which is the two, the two heaters in the art room, the English room, English rooms, and down, not down, but special, special ed room at Henderson. And that's where those unit ventilators are. To upgrade those, they're, they're the same thing. They're a coil with a damper and a control on them and a fan. They, they pull outside air. The ones inside don't pull any outside air because those used to be on the outside wall, but they're on the, they're on the, the ones in the English rooms that are, they, they back up to Busco's room and Moshe's room. Those, those used to be exterior walls where you could pull outside air, they're not pulling outside air anymore. So those, the two that didn't. But I don't have anything on the dock to replace them yet. We've done some repairs on a couple of motors and a couple of other things, a couple of controls. And let them continue to work.
So you wouldn't see that as a priority at this point, or, or do you? I mean, because I do know it is the older units.
Yeah, we could look into that and see what we're gonna be able to do that in that area.
Oh, okay.
I guess depending on what else we were, if we were doing else in that 56 wing.
Right.
I don't really, I can't remember the addresses, the bathrooms there.
Down further there, I think the bathrooms come in.
That'd have to be like a package thing, like you were talking about.
Mm-hmm, definitely, yeah. Okay, then the wood lab dust collector replacement and welding hood upgrades.
Can we, I just got a quick question. I mean, do you see like a massive improvement if we were to upgrade, I mean, or does the system, does it work?
On the?
On the, the, the unit ventilator conversion that we were just talking about?
What we'd be doing, we'd be upgrading the units, that's what you'd be doing.
How much of an improvement do you, would you expect versus what we have?
Because they haven't, the tech.
I mean, I, yeah, I get, I, you know, I get the technological upgrade, updates, I get that, but.
You know, there's only so many things they can do with a box of fan and a coil.
Yeah.
You know, what, what can we do to it, you know?
So that'd be a pretty massive update as far as efficiency in the way things run over there? Or, or does the system we have actually work pretty good?
The system we have works, okay. Do we have to tweak it or whatever, so, yes, we do. But it, it's one of those things that, you know, if, if we were gonna have to. I don't necessarily know how much of an increase, how, how much more efficient or how much more, I mean, even the controls, they're just damaged, they're, but it's close.
Sure, sure.
Outside damper and outside.
Sometimes simplicity is okay. Yeah.
There's blowers in there, right, motors?
Yeah, yeah.
Are the motors as old as the unit?
No, we've, we've.
It's new replacements. So they're high efficiency motors?
Are they all three phase?
No, those are all single.
Are they?
They're all, they're all just squirrel case, just smaller squirrel case.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, then in the woods lab, the dust collector replacement and welding hood upgrades. I believe you've been working on this kind all along, haven't you, Dave?
Yeah, we, we, we just replaced the dust collector motor, the dust collector. The, they had talked about the location of it, where it was. It's in the storage room right now, attached to the building. And I don't know if that was part that they didn't like and wanted it different. But that's, I mean, the motor went bad on it, it's a three phase motor, we replaced it. Called the company that made it, they made it, it was 20 plus years old, you know, and they, it was the exact same motor and everything, it was just like, okay, you know, as it was built, when, 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 you know, when it was built. So it was like, what more can we do, you know? So, like, you know that world.
Yeah, they don't make them any different today than they did. It's, you replaced the motor, you know, that's.
Yeah, yeah. Dust collector, for the welding and things like that, some of that, they didn't like the way the boots were set up. I mean, it, and again, as the boots, as they were set up and, I didn't know what else they were talking about with the C, if they did any readings with CFM or anything like that, but what, what, what it was actually pulling. But they, they had these more, like the lower boots that they had with the slots in it that would draw across the whole welding area instead of, where you have six inch ground coming down, drawing around one area. So that was some of the, the ideas about that that I heard.
And that ventilation system is totally separate, it's all, it's just for itself, correct?
Correct, right, right. It has a, it has its own blower up on the roof.
So if we wanted to add separate or more welding booths, do we have to change the capacity of the system?
We would probably have to, yes. Or, or add another, add another exhaust system.
And again, it's.
Like, when we looked at this tablet, and we had an exhaust fan for the laser cars, you know? You installed that, put it together, you know? So if we needed to do that, drop it down with whatever we had to, we could figure that out.
Not a complicated thing.
No.
And you guys would probably be able to plum and put a bigger motor on or change the duct size or whatever.
Right.
Okay, the sync and lavatory sensor faucet additions. We've got Sugar Camp done. Are we moving that way, Jack? I mean, Dave, in Three Lakes with the, the sensors?
With the hand free sensors?
Yeah. That's that one night that we've talked about a lot since COVID.
No, we haven't talked about it. When, just so you know, as we're, I'd say we're a little different than Sugar Camp. Because when, when we turn around and change, start to change faucets, we're changing 80 faucets. And so it's a fairly good expense. I mean, you know, and, you know, it's, it's a way to go, but do, do, do we want to go that way or do we not want to go that way? We ended up, our, you know, our push button ones, we've had, I think they are right around, well, right around 13 years old. Want to be changed those, those are, and so we haven't gone and looking at that, but, you know, in all the rooms and things like that where we would have to do that.
Well, I, I think it's a good point to talk about it because we, we talk about the health concerns and, you know, the prevention of germs and spreading and, as I, the sickie, am talking about it. But I mean, it does, it does have merit to it. And, you know, I think it's something that, just as we talked about, not necessarily on here, but with our CRC compliance update with covering those pipes with the hoods to make sure that there's no exposed hot water piping that anybody could bump into, whether there's a little kid under there or somebody in a wheelchair. Yeah, it's a bigger cost, but we ordered it all because if we need it in five areas, we need it everywhere. So we're getting it done. And that's in our maintenance plan, that's why I bring that up.
Right, right, that is good.
So I think that is something that we should be working, at least considering. I know that on the galvanized piping replacement, that is in the works, that has been planned. You've talked about the pin holes that develop and I believe you've been replacing some as we go, Dave, and that's a bigger project that is in the plans.
Right, right.
So that falls under what we're already budgeting for.
Okay.
The fire protection addition, that would also be like the sprinkler system and such that we talked about in the Sugar Camp area. That was not listed as priority by the report at this point, but it is listed because it does not exist. And then the HVAC retoral commissioning, what they, they said to me, what that is is like to belinking these different systems and such. Jack, what was that that we talked about at Sugar Camp, it was a much smaller amount, do you remember that?
It's just optimizing the system is all it's.
That's how they explained it to me, but they didn't go real in depth with it. That's how they explained it to me, but they didn't go real in-depth with it. So.
Yeah.
Questions on that first section? Okay, then looking at the, no, we're good?
No, no questions.
Okay. And then looking at the electrical systems, again, very similar to what you saw in the sugar camp with the, the arch flash and the panel replacement, they have that quoted out there or suggested cost. That was listed in both places as a prioritized need, according to what they're thinking from their end. Dave, do you have concerns with where we're at here in Three Lakes?
With the electrical panels?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, not in our current, um, we've, let's see, tapped into, with some of the things we just did in the gym, we, that we, we were able to find everything we needed with the older panels, as far as breakers and things like that, so it was fine. And so that has worked out for that. And, yeah, the only thing would be is if we were going to be looking at, the same thing with it, if we were going to upgrade, if we were ever going to upgrade the generator due to the whole building.
Right. Well, that's the next one, is the emergency generator replacement. Extend to the freezers, cooler, IT rooms. It has been an issue with coolers in the past. There has been an impact when power goes out because that has to be monitored super closely. And I think that is a priority.
Can I just step back for just a second for the panels, David? Do we have panel capacity? Do we have?
Do we have room, room and panels?
Right.
Um, depends where you, what part of the building you're in.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's some things that we're not using. There's a lot of, there's some, in some of the panels, there's spaces that were broken that we're not using anymore.
Okay.
Something different with them are eliminated, a bunch of twenty amp circuits in one area. And so, you know, we have areas that, that those are free spaces, so.
And no problem getting new breakers when needed?
No, no.
Alright.
Alright, then, um, outlet additions, replacements, I'm taking that to general maintenance. Dave, in our plans as we need them?
Yes.
Okay, so that's planned for. Then we're looking again at the card access system replacement, integrate with the camera system. And, um, camera system upgrade, additional cameras, and I'm going to refer to Steve on that.
I'm going to probably repeat most of what I said at Sugar Camp with the, the door system. I guess just so you guys, I don't know if I said enough last time, but right now, we utilize the lock and unlock features and the card entry and that works fine. When, when I started here, the doors were on timers and they would open up at certain times. You know, like when kids are coming in in the morning and they're leaving at the end, they'd lock automatically. We've since gone to, everything is manually locked and unlocked because in an emergency situation with an outside threat, if it's seven forty-five to eight fifteen and we have those doors pegged to be open, we can, there is no shut off though. There's no shut off switch to say, we've got an emergency, boom, we have to lock those. We have to go to a computer, log in, find it, turn them off, and you have to do that for multiple entry points. So what we have, we're not totally utilizing in that modality. So when they say many new IP-integrated platforms are available for keyless entry and cell phone accessories open and locked down, they would have that override button that would lock all of your doors all at once, and we could use those other features. I also don't feel that the permar system that we have currently is, I mean, that was here when I got here, so it's, it's twelve to fifteen years old. I think there's, our students know workarounds, our staff know workarounds. They, they're, they used to have buzzers that went off. We've stopped using those because different administrators would let different doors be open and closed. There's just, it's not, nothing is consistent, and part of that is, um, the design of the system. It wasn't designed for like an active shooter situation. It was designed for staff entry and exit. So it's out of date. So from the regard of a safety feature, that's my biggest worry of all the IT systems that I look at. I do not like the door system. I don't think it's conducive to the, the current environment that we have to deal with. It's something, there are lots of buildings that probably still have permar. What I was told by a couple of different vendors that I've had in is, um, our cameras that we put in, I don't know how long ago that was, five, six, seven years, but whatever. Our camera system would integrate into certain newer door systems, but our cameras won't work with this door system.
With this one.
And there are camera systems that will work with the permar system, but that would not be my recommendation just because of the limitations. And we did upgrade, um, our, our, the permar brain, you know, the computer part that runs it last year. And it, it doesn't, it's not that different. In all the years, they haven't really built that out yet. So it works fine for what we use it for, but it's, from a safety perspective, it's not, it's not where they want to be. Is that a mouth Terry?
Yep, that's great.
Is that number one on your list of priorities?
Um, from, from the elementary principal end, number one is the secure entry stuff. From the IT end, yeah, this is probably, the more integrated they all can be, I think the better off. But then when you start factoring in cost of those systems, this one is the biggest concern in my mind. Yes.
And, and one other thing with that, we're, we're looking at making one of the doorway ADA accessible with a buzzer and thing like that also. So as we start, if we're going to, if the software that the company has to open, close the door, the ADA door, it varies with permar, and if we're going to switch, it would be nice to know that has beer so we don't have to do something different once we do switch.
And then just, yeah, yeah, just like shared account too in terms of the cameras. And we do know we have several spots that we have to add to because over the years, it's, we've looked for events and certain things happen in certain corners or areas. We just don't have a camera shot. So while we have like ninety percent coverage, there are a couple of big ones that we have to. But that's, and I guess Terry said that's kind of a minor ongoing, that's something we can just take care of.
We already know that and have a plan for that, okay. Okay, the fire alarm system replacement, that is, again, the new voice command system like was talked about at Sugar Camp. Steve or Dave, you want to say anything more about that one?
It's the main panel, Dave, can I ask? It's, it's the main panel. It's, it's been there for ever. It's, it's what we call a local alarm. It doesn't call out. So if, if the alarm gets pulled, uh, it doesn't give a call saying there's a fire at the school. So, uh, or if the alarm, some alarms or whatever go off, it's, it's a local alarm that happens and doesn't go off.
I believe it's difficult to use as far as.
Is there a, the panel in the main offices?
Every time we do a fire drill, it's, boy, I hope we can shut this thing off. Because the interface, interface button in the panel by Jamie's desk is really, really in bad shape and it's not able to be upgraded or repaired.
So it does not go to permar?
Pardon?
It does not go to permar?
No, it's a simplex.
No, it's a simplex.
So who?
It's a, it's a local alarm. It just goes here.
So an administrator is required to call resources?
Yeah, our office, yeah.
Our office. Or somebody. Yes.
How often does alarm go off in the course of a year?
Typically, once a month for a fire drill.
At least twelve.
I would say, over the time I've been here, probably one other time a year on average. A kid will, you know, like a little four-year-old might pull it. It was probably more when the daycare was in here, it would happen more often.
I don't think it's happened.
We haven't had, no, not for a while.
After tomorrow, no.
And he won't be able to turn it off.
You can blame me for asking the question.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a broken interface on our board.
Yeah.
That's where the, that's where it had to be shut off.
I know Jamie sounds a little nervous when we're going to have the fire drill.
Right, she's got certain, certain gloves and she's got to wedge into there and push it straight and then it.
So that's another one, we know we're looking at that. So while we could probably get like Paladin or whatever to find a used part to fix that panel, we've been, are we replacing this? Or are we going to try to jerry rig this?
Fix it, yeah.
Yep.
Right.
Alright. Yeah.
And along those lines, like, I, I would echo what Steve's saying about that, that, that the, the safety is a number one priority for sure. And ideally, we're living in a world where everybody that's got eyeballs on an entryway, district office, high school, junior high office, elementary office, there's a hot button somewhere under a, under a desk, under a table that people have access to to block the building down and get the call out. That's two things. There, there should be a hot button, all three of those places in this building. I mean, and maybe on some of our devices.
And that's, that, you know, that's a different, that's something that we're going to be working on over the summer. We have that system in place. We would just need to purchase the, I mean, it's a, it's not a, it's not a big thing. It's just something that we upgrade and install. The fire alarm's kind of.
That's not in here, though. How did they miss something like that?
Which piece?
That's part of the card access, I think, right? You're talking about the?
The emergency, the emergency alarm?
That's, that would be part of, um, that's part of the clock and bell system that we put in. That capability was added when they did that this fall or finished it this fall. We just have it gone. I don't know how these guys didn't ask about that or.
Yeah, that's the thing I'm shocked about, like in the world of security right now, how did we?
I don't, I don't.
I wonder a lot if they were here, they would say that that's, they're feeding that in here somewhere with the card access system. I don't know.
I would think that's probably.
It certainly was mentioned when I talked with them.
I, yeah, and I think I said too that we had a new system going in and it would be addressed. But I didn't, I don't recall a ton of questions around security from any of them.
Okay, anything else on that one? Then we come down to the sound system upgrade, and we've got the big gym, the auditorium and the stadium listed. I can, I know that since I've been here, that both the big gym and the auditorium have been talked about as a priority because it's like, end of life in the auditorium, pretty much.
To me, the auditoriums of those three is the big one.
It's.
Lighting and sound.
Lighting and sound both, yes, definitely. And they are used very frequently. It's, it's not like it just sits empty when there's a once in a while use for it. They're very much in use.
I think too, when I, you know, ten years ago, we had a lot of different, the community art stuff, and, and people would come in and they would ask for things and we could provide those. But a lot of that stuff we can't do right now, so we've said no to different groups. Like, we don't have this equipment that you need to come in and put on this performance or this concert, so.
Right.
I, I think we're losing opportunities that our, our kids in the community could have because we don't have the right updated stuff in there. That one is, that's a big one. I think, I don't know if Justin was here when we looked at that last time. It was a lot.
The lights and the sound. It was probably like a hundred and, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand.
And that was three or four years ago.
And so if we wanted to look at it, Main Stage did our stage when it was built. Main Stage also did Northern Pines. Pines just upgraded their lighting and sound, but they did it in stages. So if we were, if they did it like in two or three years, they did it in stages. So they, they, they didn't bite, bite it all at once, you know, it wasn't such a heavy hit. But maybe we could look at doing it in stages, you know, we can change this or change that. If we had to find a prepaid stage, we could do it that way. But if that was something that we wanted to do.
Well, now this proposal, it's a letter, this item listed, it's a two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar item for the sound part of it. And then if you look down below, there's more auditorium.
And we do lighting.
Yep, and, and two-stage flooring for another three forty-three nine. So they got it. What we're talking about as far as upgrading the auditorium, they've got it in two different chunks here.
Yeah.
Four dollars, they're big chunks.
For six hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
You got it.
Yeah.
I bet you the flooring's a big part, big piece of that second part, too.
The what is it?
Two-stage flooring.
The flooring. I bet you that's a big one.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Yeah, we had replaced like thirteen of those panels. It's, it's three-quarter tonne group. And probably eleven years ago, we, you know, but it just gets, from usage, it's, it's, it's tough. It takes a, it takes a heavy beating. But we did do that. We went through and we picked out, like I said, we had, we did like thirteen, fifteen sheets of the flooring. We took out, replaced it.
The gym sound system we had looked at last year, we had two different vendors come in. I, I think the main concern there is, it's not the music that plays and everything else. It's the audio when you're, like, when you're doing graduation and how well you can hear or not hear that. And I think some of our, some of the wall inputs for wired is shot. It doesn't work in all locations. And we're always trying to rig something up.
We jerry rig it every graduation and it is, it is, we've been there for hours trying to get it to work, so.
The speakers are good, that, that they went through and they said those are in great condition. Should we stop using a CD player in the, in the sound, probably. We have a wireless, we have modern stuff in there. It's just what people choose to use there. But the, the mics are definitely something. But there again, it's, that's not a big ticket item in my mind. It's things that we could do on the fly or that we could do in our budget.
I mean, we've talked about doing something with that, like, for years. And the, the big event for the community at the school here is graduation. And, and some of the speeches are just, are not, yeah, you can't hear them very well.
So when they talk about the speakers being in good condition, is it the speakers? I feel like it's the coverage of the speakers in that room too, or they thought that was fine.
They did make some adjustments last spring and that's a lot, that was a lot better. It's, we never went, we never finished and said, okay, we want these more directional mics. We didn't get the mics they recommended, so we need to look at that before.
The mics definitely, I think, are a big part of it. For the students that are cognizant of where that mic is and they speak directly into it, it works. But if, if they're looking back at the class or whatever during the speech, it's gone.
We were also told the speakers are good and the components are very good and solid. That user error in messing around with the equipment by people who shouldn't be doing it have impacted some of that.
They put a guard case on there so the, the kids can't just, I shouldn't say kids because sometimes it's a, it's funky with all the settings all the time. So I think that's been better, but.
Yeah.
Right.
I was, I don't, I didn't hear.
I wouldn't.
But the whole wiring system that you're talking about, that shouldn't be every year that we mess with that.
That's the hardwired part.
That's the hardwired.
The actual stuff that's in the wall.
We've gotten to points where like we're putting stuff in and that one's not working out. It's finding a longer cord and try to run it from this one over here, so there's stuff in the walls that are not functioning.
Well, a lot of that can be bypassed with new technology, right?
We ended up doing Bluetooth on something last year.
Well, that's the music system is Bluetooth. But anyone can have their, their iPhone or iPad and just. So I say we don't need new CD players, but people don't learn the new.
Sure. You had some new mics on order, right? But you said they were back ordered or something, I think, last time we talked?
I can't remember. We don't, we never got any.
Never came in?
No.
Gotcha.
We, that's a good reminder that we should look at that now. We did get stuff at auditorium, but I think.
No, we were talking about the gym, yeah.
And the sta-, I can't speak to the stadium part of this.
Are we ready to go on?
Sure.
Built-in envelope. Um, they had mentioned that there was the need for additional overflow and, um, the skylight replacement. Apparently, when they were here, there was some heavy rain. Dave, were you aware of that? When they were here, that there was problems with the proper drainage off the roof? So that was listed as a priority.
I, I didn't, didn't hear about the skylights.
There's been no leaking or anything that I'm aware of.
There's no skylights at all.
It's functioning, as far as I know. I think the biggest point that was made was it's low instead of up high from snow, and, uh, so that was what was discussed with that one. The concrete masonry repointing, cracked repair near the building, the greenhouse, the chimney, the trash enclosure. They talked quite a bit about that one. That there is some cracks, there are some areas that repair needs to be made.
Is that on the general maintenance list?
Dave, is that on our general maintenance list, or is that something that we would need to be thinking bigger scale for? It's not a big expensive cost compared to general.
On the cracks and things like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, as, we try to address them as we move forward, as we see them come through.
I was gonna say, every summer, it seems like you're dealing with some.
Right. And it's just how far we can get around the building.
Sure.
Okay. The window replacements, this is an area in the elementary wing. Um, there are several windows that are in poor shape. I would say, Steve, would you agree? I mean, there's some rot.
Some of the classrooms.
Yeah, I think like, was it Botnick who had, uh, quite a bit of rot and stuff in there?
Probably not as severe as what Jack was describing, but.
Yeah.
Starting to get.
And Three Lakes has not replaced windows, so they're, they're not, they have a bigger task here to be done.
So, I mean, is there quite a few of them?
All right, Mike, are you asking how many are in bad shape, or how many total do we have?
I guess, uh, how many total do we have, and then how many are in bad shape?
Would it be about sixteen? If you replace them all.
Yeah.
If you want to replace them all, it'd be sixteen.
You know, like sixteen would be the total if you were doing all of them.
That's it?
How many are?
In worse shape.
Well, sixteen. How many of them are in worse shape?
Two or three.
Right. Two or three are in bad shape.
Okay.
Is that something, Dave, that we could be doing in our summer schedule with ordering of them, or?
We, we could.
So I mean, I think that's the kind of cost that we've got built within our deferred maintenance.
Yeah.
I remember looking at the windows with you two years ago. And we looked at Botnick, and we looked over by the music room, where we had saw a little bit of like, uh,
Yeah.
leakage coming in around that area.
Yeah, if we, if we go through and get which ones we want in the building.
And then there's the exterior door maintenance and replacements, um, door fourteen repairs and door twelve replacement. And that was not listed as high priority. That was just listed as it had come to, they had noticed that it needed some work. Site and Civil. These have been, the first three are listed as priority. The sinkhole outside the library wall, we know about that. Um, elimination of the stormwater at doors seventeen and eighteen. That's in your areas, uh, Steve, the elementary, correct?
Yeah.
Where we have.
Floods every spring.
The sandbags that we have flooded.
Maybe not this year.
Maybe not. But that is a.
Laying over.
Yeah. But that is a concern, and that is a priority. And then replacement of the sidewalk by door one, which is right out here. That's gotten to be in pretty rough shape, and I don't know that you can do much more repair and have it look anything decent. I, I don't know. There's a lot of cracks. It's gotta be maintained. The weeds, I'm a, I'm the weed Nazi. I cannot stand it when I see the weeds in there, when I'm coming up in the summertime. I've gotta come to work every day. I don't wanna see weeds there. I don't wanna see grass blown onto the sidewalk and not brushed away. David's heard this many times. If you cut the grass, you gotta get it off the sidewalk too. I mean, those are the little things that say a lot about the character of our building, and we wanna keep up with that kind of stuff.
David, when we did the parking lot out here, we had some of the concrete replaced at the main entrance here. Did you guys do that, or is that just contracted out?
Actually, um, Kayla Shu, Captain.
Marty?
Marty Jolen.
Oh, Jolen, okay. Got it, okay.
And then there's sidewalk replacement listed for door thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen. That was not listed as priority, if, but it was identified. And, um, storm inlet, pavement repair, door sixteen. Hmm, I'm not sure which door we're talking about in that one. Is that page seven? Moment of drawing again. Oh, okay. So this is in the elementary area, right? Steve, where people try to walk across it when it freezes? Is that what we're talking about?
I'm not sure.
The storm inlet needs, pavement around the storm inlet has degraded and settled around the inlet. The asphalt has minimally, um, subsided around the stormwater inlet.
Atmosphere of the elementary.
That.
It is, yeah.
I believe that's where people assume there's, because there's like that dip, they think it's a sidewalk rather than what it is. It's not supposed to be for walking, but people do go through there. It's, it's just kind of a goofy location where it is.
Is that sinkhole or something bigger, or is that just? A drain pipe?
Um, it's, it's, it's right outside the old bandroom.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Which used to be a pit, you know, which was, used to be lower.
Yep.
And you could probably get lost in those right now. It's, it's, yeah, and we'd added material to it a couple of times, and it was just, okay, we're gonna I don't know where it goes. You know? The first time we found it, the guy was cutting the grass, and, and it was like, whoa, you know? And then after that, it's been, um, you know, I, I keep trying to think, 'cause, 'cause there was, there were shower rooms underneath the old, when the old stage was there, and the locker rooms, used to be below the stage in the old gym. That had, um, you know, there were locker rooms, you think, and would it possibly be going down in one of those drains or something like that, or one of those drains that could seal when it all got closed up? I, I don't know. And did it take that long, this long to, to find its way instead of, you know, going? So I, I don't know. That's why we. It would be nice to, I mean, but we're gonna have to get a piece of equipment and then dig it and, and try to find out what.
Right.
What's there.
Might be able to get a guy with a camera. Um, similar, similar to when they do some like uh, stormwater culvert, or stormwater stuff, they can, they could basically snake it with an LED camera and maybe we'll see where it goes and what they can find.
Yeah, 'cause it's, it's right alongside the building, and it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I saw it the other, I looked at it the other day, and I went, okay, we're gonna probably have to add something to this before.
Okay. Interior finishes and AD, A, the two that were, or actually, there's three, that were listed that, um, in talking with the administrative team and with the, um, Nexus, that came up as priority was the priority ceilings in the nineteen fifty-six corridor, the first one. That one rose to the top, um, as well as the, we would like to see that priority walls, the recoding of the ceramic tile in the high school area. That's that peach beige tile that we were looking at. Not ripping it out, but upgrading it with the coating of like the blue J-Blue. And then going down to the auditorium upgrades of the LED lighting upgrade and the new stage flooring. The other ones here, um, they're listed similar to us, what we had talked about with Sugar Camp for some of these, but they didn't hit the a need as a prioritized need right now. So we can talk through each of them, or we can just discuss as a unit, whatever your preference is.
I guess what I'd like to do on that fifty-six wing and that ceiling in the hallway, I'd like to drop, put a drop ceiling in there. Can you eliminate the other one? 'Cause that's, those are those two-by-two staple tiles or two-by-three tiles. Staple up to the, drop a ceiling in there, put a drop ceiling in there, and just drop that ceiling down six inches or whatever. And then hallway.
Because right now, what is it as far as the material?
It's, it's like, well, there used to be, there were twelve-by-twelve tiles and.
Yeah.
Or stay, something like that, same. To the, to the.
To the plywood or whatever.
Raffers, to the raffers.
Justin, did you wanna say anything more about the flooring, especially when we talked about the wrestling spin mats, the the commons in the kitchen quarry area that rises to the top for you there? We don't have it listed as priority, but we did discuss.
Well, just the fact that the flooring in there is fantastic. I would love it to, a- a- as we can afford it, to push throughout the building, but it's like, it's not, it's not a, gotta have it now, not a need. It's, it's something that, there's, there's places in our building that have really great flooring options. Or not options, but.
It shows.
Yeah.
It shows that it's updated, yeah.
Yeah, the only thing, as we tie into that, we just have to make sure that there's some of those rooms, like the wrestling room, we were gonna do, but it was asbestos tile underneath it. So that's why we didn't do it when we did the last. But that's all part of the, part of the play. And we still have a little bit of that also.
Okay, and then the.
So, just a quick question on this one here. Is this, this segment here, does this basically cover the rest of the, the school floor? Is that basically that entire area?
I don't think it's the entire area. Because there was no discussion about replacing or covering up the terrazzo. That, that has never been in, up to discussion. I mean, that, that's really good flooring that we want to polish, which is extremely expensive, but get back down to the, the polish and the refinishing. And that isn't our plan, and that is a phased plan too, because it's not cheap. It is labor-intensive to get it back to speed.
When they say commons, kitchen quarry, they're talking about?
I think it's this quarry tile out here in the entryway.
Oh, okay.
It's the four-by-four squares.
Okay. If I had to guess, Mike, what they're referring to is all the zero-to-five from the mat? So they got the carpet zero-to-five, the VCT zero-to-five mat, and the quarry tile all zero-to-five. That's what they're recommending in that million?
Zero-to-five.
Yeah. Yeah, just, just a million. And what did we spend on redoing the, the commons area here?
Um, I think all, and there was the hallways too. I just looked at it. I wanna say it was around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the whole project that we did.
Right, it was all the, it was the.
The corridor.
The entry-high hallways.
Yeah.
Hallways that are back by the locker rooms, the hallway coming up. Um, actually, the hall, all the hallways in, in the whole area except for the quarry tile. And.
It's quite a bit.
It was a lot of footage that we covered.
We took all the twelve-by-twelve tile out, then went to the hallways. I thought we were gonna have to do it like in three stages, but, you know, the price came in such great.
It was a really good product, too.
Also, so it's all the hallways they did in that project. Except for the quarry, the, except for the, the terrazzo and the couple of areas where there's quarry tile.
Okay.
And the only place we have twelve-by-twelve tiles yet are like in the classrooms.
Right. Okay, high priority, um, it wasn't listed as high priority, but the new door in keyed hardware, we've talked about that, and that's got a big price tag on it. But we've talked about, at some point, are we going to rekey our doors, rekey our building, you know, because there's a lot of people who for many years have, we try to keep a handle on keys, but you don't necessarily know what keys are out there. And that's something that I think, when we talk about safety and security nowadays, that's on our minds. The shelf work, or the casework and the shelving, um, it's, it's in good shape. It, it might not be the most modern colors and such, um. We're talking basically like some of the classrooms and stuff, but it is functional. It's not bad. And then the locker room refurbishment, replacement, that did not come in as a high priority. That was just identified as potentially an area in the future that we would wanna look at updating. Justin, do you have more info on that that you wanted to share, or is that?
No, that's, I would just be echoing what Ilchary did the other day. And he's not here, by the way, to get the print, as he mentioned, so. Um, but that, would it be great? Yeah. Is it a priority right now?
And then the auditorium upgrades with the lighting and the flooring, which we talked about already. Thoughts or feedback on those?
Some of this stuff could be done in stages.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And then I guess some of it, I suppose, just like you found out with the flooring, it was better off to do it all at once and you're done. And I guess until you got actually quotes out in these, you, you don't really know.
Right.
Right.
So. I guess you probably just have to list which are the priorities in this group of interior finishes. That'd be my suggestion. Start with that.
Yeah. We have talked about that internally, but we can get more specifics to you on that. You know, to us, is the, the peach-colored tile functional? Yes. Um, but really, when we're talking about branding and where we wanna go with our colors and, and tying in and that appeal for attracting new students and new families, that's something that they notice right away. So to me, the money invested is definitely going to have a payoff attached to it.
Yes.
Sweet example, that you walked in the sugar camp now after they did the, the revamping, yeah, it feels good, right? Whether you're a new student or you've been there every day, like, that feels good.
It feels.
Not that against peach or pink, but.
It's no different than the faucets. It's a, it's simple little things.
Yes.
That just take you to the next level.
It does.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and then our last area is the educational adequacy and site updates. So I'm gonna ask principals to really share on this, but as Steve mentioned, elementary office remodeling and secure entry. I think the secure entry is the biggest piece of that even more so than what you would consider remodeling. Steve, do you wanna share on that?
I just wanna make clear, we didn't ask for an office remodel.
No, no.
There's a different way to do this. I would be fine. Our office complex is fine.
I, I think we should make that very clear because Steve did not ask for that. It was, it was about a secure entrance and what that could look like.
Existing outside entry that the childcare was using, they looked at that as this would be easy. There's already bathroom lines in there, all that kinda stuff. So could they do it that way? Yeah. Is there a different way to do that? I, maybe? I don't know, but somehow right now people can just come in and certain, so it's.
Yeah.
You can see them, but not always when it's busy, you know, so just be better to have them come through and check in. I don't necessarily wanna be like Northland Pines where you have to show a driver's license and all that stuff, but we need to have accountability for anyone coming in the doors. And, sorry, right now, I think Justin alluded to this before a little bit, the, the open the door buttons that are in multiple offices, sometimes they're opened from a different office and they don't necessarily have close eyes on.
Yeah.
Who that person is or isn't, and that's when people, you know, mistakes are made or you're in a rush or you think it's someone else and it isn't and they could, you know, we've never had an incident, but it's just a scary. We don't have total control over our entry door at all. And that, that's the same for Justin or for Carrie down here. It's.
And we have talked about it frequently. That's something that we're, we're aware of, but it's, it's on our mind.
And I, I said before, this is my, of all the things we're looking at, this is my number one.
Yeah. And then the elementary student and staff toilet room remodeling with small group room. I don't know if that was an ask from.
It was not. It was just, I, we, they asked about educational spaces and I, he asked if we had a common, like a room that we use for staff development for small student groups. I said, yes, we do. This is it and this is what they propose, so. Would it be nice? Yeah. Is it, it's not, it wouldn't even be one or two for me. It'd be a three.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
We, we don't have the space issue that Todd hasn't shared, so.
And that is true.
Same can be said for the elementary, the STEM lab upgrades.
Yeah.
That's, would it be nice? Yeah. Is it necessarily necessary? No, I'm not at this point. We're, we're utilizing STEM lab. Classes use that all the time. It's, it's fine for what we're doing at this point.
You know, I realize that three hundred thousand is a lot for a remodel and secure entry, but I mean, really it, it's not bad. You get, you get actually a lot out of that item.
Yeah.
If you look at, yeah, if you look at the picture and what it would be.
What the proposal was, yeah.
It's, I mean, that's, that's actually one that stood out to me as being like, that one makes sense.
It's a good repurposing of space.
Yeah.
Josh, when you're looking at that, um, do they have retrofitting the current offices on there as a supplement or all that's in that?
No, I, it looks, it looks to me, cause they don't have a, unless that's, unless that's the second piece, the student and staff toilet room remodel. Unfortunately, that might be part of that, which would take it up to about eight hundred thousand between the two projects. Yeah, that's, that's what I wasn't a hundred percent sure of.
I know they wanted to, they would obviously change that office complex from what it is now to like, I, I remember saying a staff work room or maybe different things there, but I, I wasn't clear on which line items level that.
Yeah, I, I think if I had to guess, those two lines. The, the office remodel and secure entry is just the office portion. And then the four seventy, the, with this elementary student and staff toilet room remodel. I think is probably the next, the repurpose of the current office.
Yeah, that, they talked about turning that room one fourteen is a, a reading and staff training room. I think that's what they were doing with that one. I don't know if they stuck that all together there. I'm not, we'll have to find that out. I'm not clear.
You know, but again, you know, if you're going, if you've got a, cause that area is being not, is that be, is the day, old daycare being used now?
They are currently empty.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, you kinda, if you repurpose that office or into the entry, you've got some time to do something different with that other area. But that's obviously a lot, but, but anyways, like I said, that was just my two cents that that one, of all the things, that one probably made the most sense of everything I've read here, outside of basic maintenance.
Right. Okay, um, Justin, you wanna talk a little bit about the junior high high school or the junior high school toilet room remodels? Um, I just know that Phil was really stressed about that price tag attached to it.
Yeah, yeah, he was.
Although we know that that is an area that has more needs, stuff in the building.
Yeah, he talked about, like we all do when you look at these price tags, like, boy, you think you'd be good for a little bit less than that, but we don't, no, we don't function in this stuff every day, but, um, I, I know we like the plan on that. It, it eliminates basically an unnecessary hallway. It, it creates a scenario where you don't wa, you no longer have junior high kids having to walk around back into the high school area to go to use restaurants. That's good. And, uh, I, I know Phil's heard it in, thus far this school year, I heard it the last two years. Uh, we are really lacking on breakout spaces to provide interventions in a, uh, you talked about it a lot, Mike, when we're talking about sugar camp in a uh, way where it's not, hey, look at me, I'm getting help over here.
Right.
Kind of, kind of way. This, this plan, that, that component of this plan, uh, it got a, it got a prioritized level from all of us the other day. I would say of this list, it's probably my number two. Pretty good idea. I, I like the, and, and, and again, we're, we're giving, all we're giving up is a hallway that nobody needs to use right now anyway. Right now, we've got a lot of our spare trap houses staffed there.
And that's the T L E D A six.
T L E D A four. Six is my number one though, Mike, you're working ahead.
I saw the special education there.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, what I was referring to is the breakout room reference in T L E D A four. That would be a spot specific to junior high, not, not just special education, but junior high period all the way across the board, seventh, eighth grade. We're, we're really short on breakout spaces.
Got it.
Okay, we did not prioritize the junior senior high science room and art room updates. Um, we didn't really have a lot of conversation about that, Justin, am I correct?
No.
They just didn't rise to the top at this.
Right. The, the next one is, uh, this one takes care of a lot of the, the asks that we had when we, um, met with Nexus on their site visits. It creates a scenario where now you have essentially located a special ed classroom. That's not a, a corner cram space. It's, it's a good size space now, uh, in this plan. It also takes care of one of my highest academic priorities as we get a full-size math classroom out of the deal. That's great. Does create a L G I multipurpose room. That's a space that we would use, it would get some utility, uh, especially like during the wind times when you have a class meeting that maybe one classroom is too small for. It creates a spot where if both of our social studies teachers are bringing in a, a guest speaker to talk about his Vietnam experience, is you can have those places if one classroom is too small for.
Sure.
When you put groups together. We don't currently have that, um, in, in terms of, I mean, you can go into auditorium within that, maybe it's a little too much space, but it, it would be handy, uh, for sure and, uh, like it's tapped into multipurpose, it, it can be almost anything we need it to be. If we have in any given year, a lot of kids out for wrestling, you could still use it for that, uh, after school. Not, not a, not a problem, but, um, and then right across the street, you would have your, you'd like your special ed suite, which I love, especially the way we're staffing things right now, cause we have an adult, uh, apparel in the, um, L G I, not L G I, excuse me, L M C for honors study hall. It would be very convenient to be able to provide some intervention services right there in that place. Cause we have rooms for it in the library, physical space, but it's really hard to use those right now. For that way, in that, I should say. So I'll go yakking about that, but I, that, that's a really good academic move for us. The flexible space in that multipurpose room would be useful, for sure. And I didn't talk about this either, but you go on our in-service days, I mean, anytime we wanna talk to the staff or have a staff meeting or elementary plus middle plus high school, that, that would be a great spot for it, rather than putting people in the auditorium. But another use for a multipurpose room.
Okay, and then the high school main office remodeling and entry lobby update branding?
Yes. That is of the, this educational adequacy list, that's my number three. It, it, it's a, put it this way, I love the idea of when a student is down in the office and if they're, maybe they're in trouble, they got sent out of class, or maybe they're having a bad day, maybe they need some, uh, conversation. I, 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 here's what I don't like, when the current setup, they're down there on display when.
Sure.
Stacy comes to bring her son his lunch that he forgot. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Same place, same exact spot. Uh, that's, that's not ideal. That's not ideal. So, um, I, I, I like what this does in terms of, like Steve, I'm not saying, oh, take care of our offices. That, that, that's not it at all. But it would be nice to have a little bit and, and, and they figured out a way to get some of that so you're not walking through somebody's workspace or office to get to another place in there. So, uh, that's good. I like that.
Okay, so we've got your one, two, and three.
That's, that's my one, two, and three, yeah. And I should also mention that if, if someone comes down there to use the sick room, we're all together. One hallway for germ's sake and things like that, or privacy.
Okay, and then they had to look at the district office, secure entry and concessions remodeling. They grouped that together, um, where I'm okay with the initial plan with, you know, how it would be a separate secure entryway. Certainly not in love with how it's set up currently. Caleb needs to have a space. We can't take half of his space away from what he has virtually nothing now. He needs to have a space for what he does and the work he's doing, um. So there would have to be some more talk done, done regarding that. I guess I just don't worry about the business office as much as I do about the elementary offices with that secure entry point. I know as from a building standpoint, you all want them, you want them all secure, but I guess I think of the kids first. We don't have the traffic coming through our office like the high school and the elementaries are having come through theirs. So, yes, I think it's probably within the priority of the security plan, but, um, how fast it needs to be done, it might not rise as fast like year one or, you know, year two or year three. We could talk about that. Um, then looking at the junior high gym toilet updates, privatization, um, showers and new entry doors, that's not listed as priority right now. But it was identified. We had talked about in the early stages that with the different issues that are coming up now with, um, bathrooms and, and again, with the ADA showers and stuff, we had talked about that modernization of that. And then looking next is our community fitness center addition and high school entrance canopy. I asked them to bring us back a separation of these two items. They're, they're combined right now, which might be good in like when you're talking about the package deal, but I also don't necessarily think that if this is a want versus a need, we have to be careful about what that is. Is a need an improve, a, a replacement or an upgrade to our fitness center? I don't know what that is. I think that's the kinda question that would be more of the community survey questions that would give us more guidance. Whereas I do think the high school with the academic and the branding and, and who we are as a school does to me is more the need end of this. That's my opinion on that, so feel free to disagree or.
We kinda talked about that the last time. There's no, there's no problem in place.
There is not.
Identify a need to have a separate community fitness center.
Right.
The community is currently using the fitness center. There's no identified problems. What?
The appeal sometimes, and I, I think this is where it's coming from, is when you want full community support, if there's folks that aren't invested necessarily with the students or that, that connection, but they are to the fitness center, that's a high visibility item that they say, okay, my taxes can support that because I benefit from that. I use that.
Well, and that could be, I mean, you could do the canopy with the possibility, you know, you could build it in preparation for a possible addition later. The other thing with the community sport thing is, you know what, if, if the community wants to step up something specific for that type of a thing, maybe that's a separate, you know, that's, that's a separate thing. Maybe it doesn't necessarily have to be initiated by the school, but, or could be initiated by the school, but then you know, a direct support by the community, maybe separately. And at this point, have we heard anything like we need to do something with that space?
I have not, other than it's used very heavily. I mean, it's.
Our membership keeps growing.
Membership is growing, that's good. Um, I would say that for the first time in three years, I've seen, and it's been here, and so those of you that've been here longer than that could, could certainly chime in, but, uh, at, at this point in time, when this is a happy, happy, joy, joy problem, when we have a section of fifteen or twenty students in there and now a half dozen people happen to pick that as their time to come in and work out, it's, it's packed, it's tight. But that is a small portion at certain hours of the day. You know, we gotta, we gotta log jam in their second hour. And so what happens then is your community members quickly figure out, hey, I, I'll come a little earlier, I'll come a little later, and then, and it's not as tight. The great, happy, happy, joy, joy news is we have students a, a, at a higher rate taking the courses that are in there, right? That's good. Um, and we have people using it at the same time, also good. You might hear, hear some folks at that point, and, and we don't hear it in there, um, but there might be some people grumbling that, hey, I can't get on this machine or I, I gotta wait for this. I certainly hear it from the kids. Like, I'm trying to get my workout done, I've got forty minutes and this guy's over here on this machine, you know, talking to his whatever on the phone, you know what I mean? So I hear it from the kids. I don't hear it from the community.
Sure.
Currently.
Okay. And the membership rate now, is it like six hundred?
You're active, correct. Uh, just shy of two thousand overall since that place opened up to the public.
Okay, then looking at the construction assembly lab addition, fab lab equipment and welding station expansion. We had already talked about the welding station expansion previously, um, knowing two years ago. We had already talked about the welding station expansion previously, knowing two years ago, we had a real heavy influx of students. I think this year it is more manageable, it's like Justin said, it's tight when you have several kids who want to use it at the same time. But the guys have been really good about being flexible and independent study and, and arranging it, so it is working. Not saying that we don't want to look at that. As far as the, the construction, this would be an add-on for the assembly lab addition. Justin, did you want to talk more about that? Because are we really talking about the building and trades, like the house program, you know, like we had talked about, are we talking more about building small?
See, that, that's a great question, cause a lot of those conversations happened between Brad, Nate, Al, and Brian as it came around. But the, the biggest need, the thing I hear about the most is the welding stations. And that of course fluctuates. The year we had thirty kids sign up for welding, oops, now we've got a problem. Now, the good news is, we're not in a spot where we don't have staff available to offer it in several hours and spread it out. We'd offer two or three different sections, or we have welding lab and we can, okay, if you're welding one or welding two or welding three, we could do that, right? So it, it's been okay, but we, we're definitely tight there. And, and we hope the trend of kids taking us up on the opportunity to hop in there and take welding classes, especially with the nickel aid program, you know, that we're working with, I, I think the need that we have now will at least maintain it or get higher. So it's not, it's not a bad plan to be ready for a few more welding booths for sure. And then a lot of the, you know, Terry, you and I always hear about, we need places to assemble, what we're designing and what we're, you know, we don't have a lot of free space. And in, in all fairness, when you walk down there during an hour when we have the junior high block going on, it's, there's, you know, when every kid in junior high is in that particular block, at some point, it gets tight. So can we make do with what we've got? Yep. Would it be great to be able to expand in an area where we have seen an increase in student interest lately? And, and we all know in the community, this is what we need. Yep. You know, so it's a big ticket item, you know, it's.
Thoughts on that from any of you?
Our current structure for students in terms of the hours and stuff, you know, the hour, the periods and stuff like that, has that been more conducive to allow students to participate in fab lab than other?
Well, put it this way, there's been an absence of complaints from anybody in that area in the building as far as what the schedule looks like now. I, I think they liked it when we went to a few more minutes per hour a couple of years back. Was it the secondary event? Yeah. Where we, where we, you know, took the forty-two and made it into a forty-eight or forty-nine or fifty-minute period. That's been good. And because we, we offer so many things to so many kids, you know, we, we're flexible enough where when we need a student to have building trades for all three periods of the afternoon, we can make it fit to get what they need for other classes. You know what I'm saying? So yes, and, and if a kid needs that second period of whatever strength, they're working in the woodshop, they're in the welding, we can do that, Ryan can do that. It's, it's a lot of front end figuring out how we make everything balance out, but there's, yes, we're okay there.
So in terms of limiting factors, in terms of student participation in those areas, you don't feel anything along that line in terms of the, the periods and stuff like that? Is it more of a student interest then that is the limiting factor?
Yes. I'm aware of one student in the past two years that couldn't take a class in tech ed because there was a science that, that student needed on this graduation, and we couldn't make it work. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of flexibility on, on the part of Ryan on the front end to make it, you know, all fit together, but our teachers in that end of the building are really good about, hey, I got welding two going on in here, but this welding one kid wants to get in for second semester, we'll, we'll make it work. We'll, we'll figure it out, we'll give that opportunity. So no, scheduling hasn't been, or, or the timeframes haven't been a limiting factor at, at any sort of multiple occasions, no.
So the fluctuation in, in student participation is best explained by?
That's a good question. That's a really good question. Sometimes it's friends, you know? And we're in such a small place, like two or three kids decide to go to this rather than this, and all of a sudden now you got a couple welding booths open, you know?
So a couple of years ago, when we had more participation, it was tight?
Yep, you got it.
Yeah, there's some, some, some other option there, that's a big ticket there.
Can it be split up? So it's, you know, each thing is separate, like the lab edition is separate and the fab lab is, equipment is separate and the welding booths are separate instead of just one big ticket item?
I'm sure. It's, it really could be reorganized totally in there. It's just.
Just like the one before where we talked about like the, any sort of, any sort of canopy or entryway doesn't need to be tied in with a new fitness center or addition to the fitness center.
That garage that is kind of in between everything, what, what does that get used for?
It's a good question.
Okay.
The bay when they put the.
It used to be for automotive, I think, at one time.
There's one that's a trap, there's two in there, because we got the, is that what you're talking about?
I, I think you're, you're talking about the sheds outside.
Yeah, those are what you're talking about?
No, the, where you can actually drive in.
Oh, the paint booth, the spray booth. Spray booth, and then you can pull a car in there, work on a car.
Right. I mean, do we do the automotive?
They had a, what were they making that little go-kart, whatever thing?
Yeah, they've done, they've done a couple of mechanical projects.
Yeah, that's what they're doing in there.
It just seems something could be redesigned, that, that entire area to make better use of the space. I don't know if that's a place to start, cause.
I would agree, cause I was, I was like surprised, like eyes big when I saw the initial drawing up there that showed a whole new footprint.
Right.
Like I, I, I feel like that's been a little bit much for our needs, but.
And what about the wood shop? I mean, how many of the machines are, are used?
It's pretty busy, yeah, it's, that's pretty busy.
Is it?
Yep. When, when there's a woods class going on there, it's, it's hopping in there.
Okay.
Everyone has their seats and glasses on.
Okay.
All right, then we've got the elementary parking addition and revisions. That came also from the Nexus review. Steve, I don't think you had been.
You didn't ask for it. They asked about students coming and going.
Yeah.
I, I would have concerns about removing the island and, I don't know, it is very congested at the end of the day, the last few years, but it's not a priority at this point.
But it does, it does flow, and people, when they get the system down, they, they understand it, I mean, it's.
There, there isn't a need for more parking or sale there.
I don't believe so either, especially at the removal of green space and such for that.
Is there, does it make any sense to consider part of the elementary exiting out into this lot and kind of reorganizing how the buses come in? You know, would grades four through six or something like that exit out this way?
Wait, all of the bus kids exit out this door?
Well, I mean, as far as the parents picking up and stuff like that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I don't know.
Just to remove some of the?
Yeah.
Overall, so.
Thing is, a lot of them have a first grader and a third grader and a fifth grader, so I mean, maybe if we did it like family specific.
Adding traffic into these bus lines too late.
It's.
We could look at it.
It's busy.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I feel good about the, the teacher, the adult leading the little ones onto their bus. And really being the leader of the pack and making sure everybody's into the right, correct bus. I would worry a little bit if it's kids shooting out here, kids shooting out there, cause it's, until the buses start to pull out, it's pretty congested there.
There's part of the issue with the elementary side, it's just its space.
It's not a very large area, yeah.
You almost have to try to buy additional real estate, and I don't know if that's even possible, but it's just not a whole lot to work with.
And yeah, Dave had redone some of the lines out there a couple of years ago, so we have increased parking stalls from what we had five years back. Yeah, it's.
Okay, are we ready to go to stadium? All right, stadium upgrades, the track replacement, bull posts and irrigation. Justin, I'm going to ask you to speak with what you and Bill have talked about too, or Jack as a coach, or anybody who wants to. As far as the track and such goes, that's something that's been on our plan right along. We, we know that there needs to be improvements. Josh probably knows better than anybody what, what that could look like and what that needs to be. We also know that our field needs to be, is in severe need of updating growth, water, fertilizer, I mean, a very nice system. We can't let that go anymore. It's just, it cannot go. It's the sore eye of our district, and there's no reason, if we don't have the human capacity to make it happen. Dave and I have talked at length about this the last couple of years, I know Justin has too. We have to have those fields ready to go and in good shape, whether, you know, it's the off-season or not. And do we have to contract out for that? Do we have to have somebody that does it, who is knowledgeable of it? Or do we have to have the manpower to dedicate to it? But that, that is, that is not a Nexus thing, that's not a long-range plan. I bring it up because we had said before we do any decisions with that area, we wanted to see what this comprehensive plan came in as. I do think within our regular deferred maintenance budget and, and our planning, we know we need a track, we know we need to improve that field. That just is a need, and I will call it a.
Yeah, and we have schools that don't want to come here to play our sports.
That's what I hear.
I mean, that's huge, and that's terrible.
Not just teams that don't want to, it's teams that have not.
Well, they won't, right, they won't, they won't come here.
They won't enter, they won't enter a home-to-home contract with us, cause it means a trip to three lakes. Not the trips, the travel, but play on our service.
Yes, and, and having to move games, I mean, it, it, yes, the, yes, I'm passionate about this.
But no, but that is something that, again, when we talk about our facilities for the, the experience of our kids, you know, the total experience, we have to be cognizant of that and, and do a good job of that. Now, there's a lot of varying degree where you go, everything from seeding and watering and fertilizing to re-sodding to, there's even turf field lifted, listed here and such. Those are probably bigger discussions, but I do just want to put it out there that that is a priority that's going to be addressed this year going forward. I mean, we know it has to be.
So in regards to track replacement, it's basically at the, it, best bang for the buck, it's all or nothing. Because of, and, and it has nothing to, I'm, I'm not saying the failure has anything to do with the quality of work, I mean, we have, that is in great shape for the age.
That's right.
It's just that where the failures happen are at joints and, and then a little bit from the wiring to going back and forth to the lights, there's a lot of cracks that follow exactly where the wires are. It's, you just kind of need to do it all. There's no doubt, no doubt about that.
But the life of that, that track has certainly served its purpose from what everybody has said to me.
Absolutely, absolutely. So as far as the, the seeding versus sod versus whatever, I did look into some pricing a little bit, and in order to have somebody come in and seed and fertilize, like in the spring, and where they would actually drill the seed into the ground, which is way better than just wafting it over the top, is, can actually be very affordable and at a price where it's worth a shot just to see if it, see what goes.
Josh, we have a guy come in to do that.
What's that?
We have a guy come in and do that this spring.
Oh, it's already set up?
He was here, he plugged it this fall.
Nice, okay.
We grow it, and it's getting seeded, yes, fertilized and seeded.
Awesome, okay. So, you know, that's something, we see where, what that takes.
Is there any issue in terms of drainage in the field? I remember having some discussion with that. Crown's good. Everything's good there.
Yeah, no, the, the crown.
That's okay, isn't it?
Crown's good.
Okay, so that, that one is in the works.
I would add to that list of needs up there, restrooms.
Yes.
No, yeah, we don't have to spend nine hundred dollars on a bathroom, but restrooms will be good.
Yes, that's, that's the concessions toilet building. And then in addition to that, there was the east parking lot addition, if you remember looking at that, putting in a different area of parking, which is.
That's tough for our elderly people trying to get back there, I mean, it's.
It's a long haul.
That was a big thing the Nexus folks recognized right away, that holy man, you hundred people walk from over there up to here?
It's a lot.
Yeah, so they, they noticed that as a need, I mean, that, they were really adamant that that is not okay. So what do you do with folks who are, be, be handicapped? Well, they're parked here with their trucks and with their headlights pointed this way, which is a problem too, but so that's.
So am I hearing that you're in agreement that the stadium upgrades is something that you would like us to look at addressing that as a need rather than as a want? Or is that something you'd want more information in? Of course, we would go to the public and do that survey question as well, too.
I would be interested to see what our, what our community thinks about this sort of stuff, because it's, it's easy for me to say it's a need. Will the academic programming offer fall to shambles? No, it won't. But the folks I hang with, Stacy, just like the folks you hang with, are in here going, man, this really stinks when my kid comes for a June speed enhancement workout and they can't get on the field because the, it's, it's in bad shape, right? Like, you know, so I, I, I got a very, I don't know, maybe passionate, you use the word, view on it, but the folks I hang with have a, we have kids who are in the programming right now, right? And, and, and I don't want to dash the support of our community who has said, yep, operationally, let's, let's fund this school district and, and just say, well, for sure, we gotta have this or this or this, because that has very little, although you can make the connection with our math department, you know what I'm saying? Or, or in reading and writing, all that good stuff. But is it important? By dollar for every time I heard, hey, how come we don't have a dome? Hey, why don't we have a nice field house like Pine's? What about that Forest County Potawatomi? There's some of that going on, like it's nice to have nice facilities, right?
Just said it.
Time for dome.
Anybody who has spares, you're not gonna go for it.
But anyway, well, that, that, sorry for the long, like diatribe, but I, I would love to hear what our community thinks about this kind of stuff.
It's going to be polarizing, just like the social media, when we put out something regarding referendum related to sports-related gyms, it's very half and half. The half that have interest in athletics and what that does for our schools will be in support. People who concentrate on academics will be the opposite.
Or who don't care much about the school in general, period, right?
Correct.
But along the lines of recruiting new students who are into sports, you're going to get more students here if our facilities are better.
Because the academic quality is there.
Absolutely.
We know that's a solid.
Yeah. This goes back in before I was on the board. When the track was built, that was a board initiative.
Oh.
They directed Dr. Carling to build a track, and it was built. And it was Jack Wachowski. And, uh, it was Jack Wachowski that initiated that. So, um, but did he get it, just information from the community? You know, possibly, I guess. We don't know, but that was, that was directed right from, from the board itself at the time. And then they, what they did is I think they took a loan from the state, state trust fund, I think, to build that. Is what I recall, so.
You know, there, there is the argument too, is, you know, we, we've got a pretty small track program compared to every other track program in the state. Is, you know, there's, there's also the argument, is the track necessary? So, I mean, the field, the field you can argue for more than the track. Um, not saying it's not necessary, just devil's advocate, there's the argument and stuff.
Yeah, we've got a great facility there. We'd have to, hard to not maintain it.
It also opens it up to the community too, for people to come in if it's in, the space is beautified using the track during the warm weather months or in the summer as an option.
You know, we've got a, we've got a good list of, we've got a good list of items that are more needs than wants. Add them together, it's a pretty hefty price tag, but, you know, we're almost to a point here where we could itemize these items that we have listed as a need. And while I think some of these prices are awfully on the high end, um, I mean, it's still, still reasonable to, where you could bring it forward and kind of a smorgasbord of, okay, what would you support, kind of deal and, you know, maybe even put a dollar value, would you support two million? Would you support three million? Would you support four million? You know, if, if that's what it comes to. You know, and, and then from that, from what, from what we see, the, the community being willing to support, maybe that helps to guide where you go with, okay, what needs do we need? What, what needs can we afford at that point?
And I did ask Caleb to, um, just give you a little preliminary information, should you ask or be interested. He had put in there for you a, a summary of our, uh, our common fund, you know, our, where we're at. Because what, as Mike talked about several years ago, there was not a good fallback at all. And you've really built up the general fund, you know, the, that we've got. And it's at about five million dollars now, but that's also thinking about these projects. And I would really like to work with prioritizing what is our deferred maintenance, so what we've already planned that can be covered. And so that makes a very considerable difference, I would think, in a total price tag, when we know what we've already got, because we have a generous public who's given us that, um, that permission to really take care of it. But there are some things that cost more above and beyond, and that's what I think we would like to bring back to you. And Caleb, did you want to share anything?
Just, just that over the last ten years or so, we've taken that fund balance from, you know, two million up to five million dollars. And if there was a, something that, you know, you'd be using that on, it would be kind of these sort of deferred maintenance type of things. More for the emergency if the air conditioning goes out and those type of things. So it's been built up for the last ten years or so and now is maybe the time that, you know, if we wanted to run a deficit a few years and deplete a little bit of that fund balance for these types of things, that would be an acceptable use of that. You know, you don't want to take it back down to one and a half million dollars.
No, there was a reason that we, yeah.
Right, but, you know, a hundred thousand here, there.
Okay.
There's also, you know, there's also an aspect from the public too of, okay, we gave you, we gave you a referendum, we gave you extra money, you should be.
Using it.
Using it on these things.
Right.
So it might be a harder, might make for a harder sell for more money.
Well, and that's why I think a very good example is the facilities, the outdoor facilities with the, the field. You know, I think the expectation of the community is that we maintain all of our facilities indoors and out, so.
I mean, does this make sense? And Alicia, you loaded, alluded to it a little bit before. I mean, there, there's a lot here.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we've gone through the lists identifying, uh, priorities. Some of this stuff, I, I have questions in my mind. Can we do it in-house and, and how does that fit into a general maintenance plan? Um, in terms of prioritization of this in-house projects? Does it make sense to ask administration for that information? Put together some kind of a plan on what we can do in-house and what are some of the things that we can't do in-house that are priorities?
That's exactly what we were thinking. So what I'm hearing you share with me then is that, um, you're giving me the go-ahead to go work with my team here in gathering additional information, us taking what we've talked about today as far as the priorities, separating out what we are going to do with our deferred maintenance or our current plans, account for those things that maybe aren't thoroughly planned out. Can they be covered or should they be looked at for outside funding sources, you know, as, whether it's a referendum or what it may be? And then bring that back to you for further discussion.
What, what does everybody else feel?
Yes.
Am I missing something that?
No, that sounds great.
I, I, you know, it, it was brought up, at some point, we're going to have to get some kind of public participation and feedback on this. And I think working on this, you have talking points, this is a priority because, and then those are the things that the community needs to hear. Cause most of them honestly probably aren't aware of these needs, but we need them. They gotta be on board. And so I think it's important to not only get that list, but, okay, this is why. And, and so we're prepared to go out and, and I don't know if it's a town hall thing where we get some of that feedback, how we feel it out, or if it's a survey, or maybe it's a combination of both. So, but, you know, that, that might be a step after, I guess, we hear back from administration. When, what, what kind of time do you need on this?
Well, two weeks from tonight is too soon.
Okay.
I will tell you that. Caleb, am I right?
We've got a board meeting next week and.
In two weeks, yeah, that, that's, that's just too fast of a turnaround, though I would say that the following month we could have that for you.
We don't have to set up a date now, I guess, but we just target the first Wednesday?
Do you want to do again a special meeting?
I think that's my opinion, the best way to do it. We could spend time going through it, you know, we could easily spend an hour on it again. I'm, I'm thinking. What are your thoughts?
First Wednesday in March? No, my Russell graduates. I cannot do that, March 6th. Sorry. I'll be in Green Bay.
I'm flexible that week, so I guess.
But another day I can do it.
Or do you want to put it in the regular agenda? It, it shouldn't be three hours, but.
It could be an hour.
It could be an hour.
All of an hour.
Can we have the town hall type situation or have it, like, if we, say we push it off a little bit and have it promoted in the community, right? To give an opportunity for the public to come. If it's a special meeting, it's advertised as normal, but that town hall type synopsis where people are allowed, like, we're promoting the community coming to the board meeting where that's discussed and allowing the public to.
Speak up.
Speak about priorities?
Would you, instead of having another separate special meeting where you're discussing, you're saying, go right to that? Because I think you want to hear from us, our.
Yes.
Prioritize first, because again, what I'm thinking is we really want to know what our ask is before we go there. Because that could become bad publicity too, if it's not handled correctly.
Yeah, if you don't, if, if you don't look like you're, know what you're asking for, what money, yeah. It's gotta be defined, yeah. And there's gotta be reasons.
But I do think our community has come to know and appreciate that town hall aspect where they can come and get their questions answered, and that would have to be a very big piece of this project. And we have to respect what their feedback is. If our feedback is that this is not a go or we, we can't support this, whatever the reason, then it is our duty to recognize that too.
Yeah. Yeah, and we have to be able to say what, we have to be able to say what we can do
Right.
in-house versus what we would need to bring in, because it's, when you bring the people in that, or bring contractors in, that's what's, that's when it's a big deal. That's when it gets expensive. That's when you start having limited access to building and, and that sort of thing, so.
Yeah, I think we need to take time to define what we're asking for. I think that's an important step. We've had great discussions and appreciate everybody's input and, uh, I think it's now getting that on paper and and having us look at it again and, uh, I, I can only see more discussion, so.
Would you want to do the special meeting like a, um, schedule it for an hour before the regular meeting? On the same Wednesday, the, the twentieth, I believe is what it's going to be? Knowing that, I'm just trying to think about your time.
Sure, yeah.
Burning two Wednesdays rather than one.
I'll leave it up to you guys. I mean, I'm, I'll be flexible. I, I don't like boxing us in, but.
We could also, we could also post it as with the regular meeting approximately six thirty.
Begin after.
Right, I mean, that's.
Meaning to follow.
As, we've done that before.
Yeah, you can, you can start it later, not earlier.
And we don't have to solve everything at the next special meeting either, but you would have a good feel for what is brought back to you. That gives us a little bit more time to really have it put together well. I know in the discussion process it gets messy, but we have had very deep discussions at this level here. Just recently with our most, you know, tied up with Nexus and everything, but there's many pieces that come together and we, we just really want to have a, a good product that as, I have to be able to very confidently stand behind the statements that I make for representing you and the district and the community, and I think we all are in that same boat and, you know, like, I think of Justin too. He always gets the questions in the stands, you know? We want to be able to know what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I really think the key piece of that is what we can do with our already planned maintenance and our funds. Because that to me as a taxpayer, and oh yes, by the way, I am one in this community, I want to know what's being done with that money that's already been collected for these purposes, so.
Well, but not just for these purposes too. I mean, we built that up. So we didn't have to do the borrowing, the short-term borrowing and, and so, because we were, we were underfunded in the past, so.
And we want to do it in a very transparent and building of trust, not anything that can take away from the trust that we have built.
Yeah.
One side note, I'd like to be, I'd be interested in finding out as if, and this is the always that catch twenty-two, is if the addition of debt to the school would increase our funding from general aid.
Well, I know a community, neighborhood district that it worked out really well for.
And that's where that comes from, you know, and at what level would, would that begin to be beneficial? If we could walk a line.
Well, we do have our experts with Bear that can help us navigate those waters.
Good point.
That's a really good point, Josh.
Because, yeah, that, it could be very beneficial.
Yeah, and you could also tell that to the community.
All right, and, and one other note to mention too is, you know, if we, the better we have our ducks in row two, the more fair it is to Nexus too.
Yeah, I think all this.
They put in some, they did put in some good work and they put in a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah, I think we all can agree that it's very, very thorough.
Yes.
Any other questions that we should be asking Terry? Before we meet again on this?
I mean, you're saying about what can we do versus what can, what do we need to have done by somebody else, I think is, is big. And, and what are, what's the timeline? How much can we handle? In a, I mean, cause a lot of this was, would be nice to see, we'd be able to, it'd be nice to be able to show the community some almost immediate.
Progress.
Progress. You know, I mean, I understand windows are tight, windows take some time and they really don't show off anything and they're, they're useful and they make a difference, but the community can't see it.
So we're basically looking at, uh, right now, targeting an early start to our regular board meeting.
That's what I would suggest.
And that gives you a little more of time.
Yeah.
I, I would like that better myself.
Kind of saves.
Saves you a night.
Saves a night.
Cause this is going to take you time to put together just that list of what we can do in-house. And how we tackle that and some kind of rough draft in terms of timeline kind of a thing. What's the priority within that? So, there's some work there. All right. Anything else on that? Okay, take a motion for a German.
Take a motion for a German.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Alicia. All those in favor signify by standing aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Everybody wants to leave?